For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County versus statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Okay, next on the agenda is adoption of the March 15, 2023 minutes. Commissioners, any questions? Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
Commissioner Price is seconded. All in favor? None opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Adoption of the agenda changes Ms. Eglar.
We've cut quite a few today. We have three that have been requested by the public to be removed from the consent agenda. And because the first one, number 7, 806 Petway, we just found out about, we'd like to place that item at the end of the agenda so that staff has time to prepare. And then the other two, number 8 with 1600 Woodland and number 12, 17 Primrose, we'd like to add to just right after consent. We're ready to present those. And then off the agenda altogether, request for item 17, 746 Benton, 26, 606 Monroe Street, 27, which is 1417 Gartland, and 28, 2014 Sweetbrier. So off the agenda are 17, 26, 27, and 28. And off consent are 7, 8, and 12.
Okay. With those changes, is there a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda? So moved by Commissioner Price?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. Yes, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, that motion passes. Are there any council members here after a late night? Oh, we have two. Thank you. Late morning, early morning, is that correct? Would you like to have a comment or wait until the project? Okay, Commissioner Cash? I mean, Councilmember Cash? You, thank you.
Thanks. Mainly, I know that there are some neighbors concerned about 1710 Primrose. I think you got about six letters. And I wanted to chime in and not make a call on it or a specific request on how to rule. But, you know, I hope that, I haven't had time to work with anybody on this, but I hope that some of the concerns about massing can be either addressed or explained and some of the, like, stormwater concerns, if not you all, the applicant, can address and help either solve or explain some of these issues with us. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay. All right, we are on to our consent agenda.
All right. It's notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the public or the commission requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. Items pulled from the consent agenda, with the exception of, what, 1600 Woodland Street and 1710 Primrose, will be heard at the end of the agenda. 806 Petway would be heard at the end? The other two would be heard right after consent? Okay. So, so those two that I mentioned will be heard right after consent. And 806 Petway, which has already been removed from the consent agenda, will be heard at the end of the agenda. So we'll read through these. If you would like an item removed from the consent agenda, please raise your hand clearly so that we can make sure that it is, it is heard. All right. So the first item, our administrative permits issued for the prior month. 930 McFerran Avenue, final SP. 1030 Seymour Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding. Petway has been removed. 201 Falls Street, new construction of an addition. 808 Powers Avenue, demolition. 401 South 17th Street, new construction of an addition and partial demolition. 2709 West Linden Avenue, new construction of an addition. And 1228 Sixth Avenue North, new construction of a fence. All right. Staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with their applicable conditions, which are listed in their staff recommendations, finding the applications to meet their respective, the design guidelines for their respective overlays.
As Chair, I'd like to make a comment on administrative permits, just for acknowledgement for the staff. You know, we don't always read those and see, but it's listed, and I think it's part of acknowledging staff's time and also the efforts. There have been 72 permits issued for the month, and that's not including our 24 that we are reviewing today. So Commissioners, just want to acknowledge that those are 96 projects that our staff has reviewed this month, and so thank you very much for, for that. All right, consent agenda. Motion, questions?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Vice Chair is moved. Second, second by Commissioner Cash. Okay, all in favor? None opposed? Seeing that, that motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, first we have 1600 Woodland Street, which was removed from consent. This is an application for the construction of an addition and changes to openings at 1600 Woodland, a contributing structure in Lachlan Springs East End. Councilman Withers did submit a letter of support for the project, which hopefully you received today. Staff finds that the proposed addition meets the design guidelines, and staff could have issued an administrative permit for the work, except the project is located on a corner and as such needs commission approval. The project includes the demolition of a nonhistoric rear portion of the structure. A new rear addition is proposed, which will minimally increase the overall footprint. The addition is both shorter and narrower than the historic structure. The side dormer on the addition is appropriately inset and meets the guidelines. The parcel is zoned M U N A, which has a base zoning setback requirement of zero feet from an interior side property line. The applicant is proposing to align the interior sidewall of the addition with the existing sidewall of the historic structure after an appropriate inset. This wall is about 3 and 1/2 feet from the side property line. Staff finds this to be appropriate as it maintains the historic condition and rhythm of spacing. Some finistration changes are proposed for the side elevations, which staff finds to be appropriate. These were further analyzed in your report, but I'm happy to discuss if you have further questions. Dormers are being added to the side elevations of the historic structure, which is allowed by the guidelines. In this instance, we have historic documentation of a dormer that used to be located on the 16th Street side. This will be replicated on both side elevations, which staff finds to meet the guidelines. Can kind of see that in the far right corner there. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: final material shall be reviewed and approved, and the location of utility shall be reviewed and approved. With these conditions, we find that the proposed project meets the design guidelines. Questions for me? The applicant is here and wishes to speak, and I believe we have a neighbor as well.
Thank you, Jenny. Applicant?
Hello, I'm Paul John Bullifard, 1222 East Dale Avenue. I'm the architect of record for the expansion of the, of the project. I want to say thank you to the commission and everyone that has helped in the review and back and forth on this project. We've done a lengthy job of trying to make the addition to the historic structure as sympathetic to the existing structure and make it complement it, both to the needs of my client and to the fabric of the neighborhood. Also want to say thank you for allowing us to go earlier in the consent agenda, coming off the consent agenda, and I want to say thank you for the staff for, for making that happen. The owners are here as well, and they'd like to read something. And, and I also support everything that, that the commission has recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Historic Commission for having us here today. My name is Laura Lemon. I am the owner and founder of Lemon Lane, a beauty retailer based in Lachlan Springs over on Eastside Avenue, or sorry, Eastland Avenue, next to Five Daughters Bakery. I live with my two children and my business partner and husband, Evan, on the 16th block on Eastside Avenue, just a half a mile away from this property. We are excited to further cement our roots in Lachlan Springs by redeveloping the property at 1600 Woodland Street. Our goal is to restore the historic building and create a vibrant, community-centric gathering place that ties into the already established communal fabric of Lachlan Springs. To achieve this, we use the oldest historical photo of the property as a reference, and as a result, we plan to reintroduce lap siding, dormers, and central windows at the west wall. The addition at the rear will reposition the nonhistorical lean-to kitchen, make use of the second floor space of the original building, and house the restrooms. We also plan to create a common area patio with an adjacent playground and outdoor garden for families to gather. As the owners and tenants of this property, we are committed to using elevated materials and finished details that demonstrate a commitment to craftsmanship and timelessness. In addition to Lemon Lane, the other owners sitting behind me here, who are Nashville-based, have recently founded a new hospitality concept that will make use of the magical space upstairs. That hospitality concept is a listening room bar inspired by the intimate Kista cafes that grew out of post-World War II Japan, featuring vinyl records played on high fidelity audio equipment. Lemon Lane will relocate to 1600 Woodland and expects to expand its offering to include a small café serving coffee, tea, matcha, and wellness drinks with some light bites. A Nashville-based restaurant will be located on the eastern side of the building. We're here just asking for your support. We really think this building will be a mainstay for years to come and for a special place for our community to gather. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll open public hearing. And I think, Councilmember, would you like to?
First.
You're good, you're good. Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone have public comment? All right, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chairman, this looks like a wonderful project. I'm glad to see this building coming back to what started. Fully support staff recommendations and move for approval.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second? You know, I'm going to pick Commissioner Williams today. Glad to be here. Yes.
Hi, I'm David. I live right next door to the building, so, or across the alley, catty corner. But I think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood. I'm excited to see it. The building's been deteriorating for several years, so I'm glad to see that it's going to be injected with some new life. And we were, when we, we received the public notice, as is now required for adjacent property owners, was just really pleasantly struck with the modesty of the, of the addition size and, and what's going to be, what you're proposing. So thanks and looking forward to it.
Thank you, Commissioner. There is a motion, a second, all in favor? Okay? None opposed? Seeing none, thank you, and that motion passes. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to that.
Next up is 1710 Primrose, which is a circa 1917 brick bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the neighborhood. You may remember, and this came to you originally in February for a proposal for an addition. The commission approved the addition with some conditions, and subsequently, the architect sent us revised drawings, and it did get an approval for this addition right here. The project is before you now for a proposed dada at the rear. The dada does meet all of the design guidelines. The lot is under 10,000 square feet, so the footprint is 747 square feet, which means the 750 square foot limit. Here are the elevations. The applicant proposes a 1 and 1/2 story outbuilding with a height of 23 feet 10 inches, which is less than the height of the house when measured from the top of the foundation. Overall, the outbuilding meets all the design guidelines and is on the agenda this month rather than getting an administrative permit because it's on a corner lot. So staff recommends approval with the condition that all windows and doors and the roof shingle color receive final approval. With that, staff finds that the proposed outbuilding meets the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. You did get public comment on this one, which was in the folder, and the architect is here to say a few words.
Thank you, Melissa.
Hi, my name is Martin Wick. I'm the 912 Bailey Street. I'm the architect for the project. As Melissa mentioned, this was on the consent agenda and would normally get an administrative permit if not for being on a corner lot. I am happy to address some of the concerns that were in those letters. I'm not sure if any of the neighbors are here and are planning to read those, which kind of order would be best to address them, if I just can do it now or?
Reserve 2 minutes.
Yeah, just reserve that time to address those. But as mentioned, it would have been administrative permit if not for being on a corner lot. So I'm happy to address comments if there are.
Sure, thank you. Okay, open public hearing. We did have quite a few. Come on forward and please give your name and address. We did receive multiple public comments, which was on SharePoint.
Hi, my name's David Epstein. I live at 1715 Cedar Lane. The house directly behind it. I have some photographs that I'd like to give to somebody. So thank you for allowing me the time to talk. So this property is being developed by the LLC that wishes to make the largest garage or duda possible. If you look at all the existing garages on the block, there are one or two-story garages, one-story tall, 13 and 14 feet in height. Currently, there is one two-story duda that sits directly across the street from it. We've had quite a bit of problems since it was rebuilt over an existing garage with the residents that are coming and going from that unit, which causes great concern for anybody who has children, having to complain at midnight when these guests are coming. One of the things that we also noticed is that there's setback. They're looking to come off of an alley where it is opposite another garage and a telephone pole that will not allow cars any turning radius. If you've looked up turning radiuses, you'll see that they need more than the 15 feet that they're trying to acquire before they hit my garage. All the corner garages that are two-car, one-story, 13, 14 feet, all face Brightwood and do not face the alley on the corner, because cars coming around the corner are going to drive into cars in the alley, and it's a 10-foot wide alley. So you just don't have enough room for a turning radius, you don't have enough room for cars to come down. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Don Dawson. I live at 1703 Cedar Lane. My wife and I have owned that property for 40 years. Our concern is, again, the height of this building, that in terms of our block, there is no two-car garage, I mean, two-story garages, nor are there any three-car garages. There's a couple of two-car garages and one-story garages, but most of the dwellings don't have a garage at all, and we just think this wouldn't be in keeping with the neighborhoods as it's been all the last 40 years and many years before that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Bobby Frank, and I'm at 1705 Cedar, just down the alley, a couple of houses, and agree with what, what David and Don said, but also just want to add that the, I use that alley every day in and out of my garage, and the turning out of the alley onto Brightwood is fairly dangerous and the visibility is terrible to begin with. And with a structure there, it's going to make it even harder. There used to be a food truck that was parked there for years and years that blocked the visibility entirely, and that finally went away, and to be replaced by something like this is going to make it a real menace to get in and out. So just wanted to voice that opinion, too. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Brad Von Collin, I live at 1800 Cedar Lane, which is just two doors down from the building in question. I kind of agree with everybody beforehand here. It's just too much garage, I think, for that small a lot, and I just vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diana Conti. I live at 1707B. It's a back unit, Cedar Lane. My concern is the alleyway. I take that alley in and out to get to my unit, and it's a very narrow alley. And to have other cars coming in and out is just be a madhouse, in my opinion. I really feel this garage should open up to Brightwood rather than the alleyway, and it's a huge unit that is not fitting in with the rest of the historic area. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Councilmember Cash, did you have any other comments?
I'm, I'm taking notes, and if you have suggestions, I'll add to my request earlier, is if you have suggestions for me as to how to address some of these outside of historic zoning, I'm, I'm all ears.
Okay. We'll see how the commission discusses. Sorry? Oh, yeah, rebuttal, sure. I just want to make sure a council member had, and thank you for the reminder.
As far as the, the size goes, again, this is what's regularly approved in this neighborhood. This particular block might not have been, had new outbuildings developed on it yet, but if you drive all over Belmont Hillsborough, you'll see pretty much this exact same building in alleys all over that, all over that neighborhood. It certainly is tight when you drive down any of them, but it's what zoning allows, it's what the guidelines allow, so it's kind of getting into a gray area if we start to pick and choose which lots can and can't build this, this kind of structure on them. As far as the visibility, we are pushed as far to the, I guess, the east side of the lot as possible, and this, this lot, if you remember from when we presented the addition, has a 10-foot setback off of Brightwood already anyway. So we're going to be 10 to, I guess with the sidewalk as well, maybe 15 feet away from the end of the alley where our building starts. So as far as visibility goes, there should be plenty of distance for you to drive past the building and be able to see either way clearly down Brightwood Avenue there, so that hopefully shouldn't, I mean, I think it's going to align pretty closely with the one-story building across from it. So if you can see clearly past that building as well, you should be able to see past cars as you go look the other way. As far as facing Brightwood with the, the garage doors, you know, we have to meet that 20-foot spacing between the outbuilding and the, the addition, and facing the garage doors towards the alley allows us to do that at this point. And again, we're allowed to do that by the guidelines of base zoning, so if we're starting to be forced to turn things like that, it sets an odd precedent for when you can and can't do that sort of thing. So I don't know that I have too much else. I think somebody mentioned stormwater at some point, and I'm happy to talk about that, but I guess my time's out, so I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, I think we're going to close public hearing, and we'll have commission discussion.
Madam Chair, may I ask the applicant just a quick question?
Yes.
Thank you. On the picture brought up, there is an existing chain link fence.
Pictures? Or which picture, sorry, the one that got passed?
The back of the house.
Okay.
In the back of the house, near the alley, there is a chain link fence, I believe. So the location of the chain link fence and location of the proposed building, could you, do you know how far the fence located from the alley?
I'm not sure that I've been back over there since it was staked, so I'm not sure how far that is from the property line. I mean, I most, it looks like it's pretty close to a line with the outbuilding next door, so it might be a little further off the alley than is typical. So I don't know the measurement for sure, no, I'm sorry. I couldn't tell you exactly where that sits on the lot versus where the property line is and where the building would be.
Thank you. I just, I was just curious, the location of the fence versus location of the proposed dada, if the chain link fence is closer than five foot, because the dada was proposed five foot from the alley. So I'm trying to establish the distance.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Sir, we've closed public hearing. Commissioners, any questions? Any other concerns?
Certainly heard some of the objections or at least concerns from community members. I think during the, unless you turn the building, which, which then would be in violation of some other guidelines that, that we have. In its current orientation, if you were to put a garage door in that end, I think the unintended consequence of that, that couldn't be enforceable, would be that somebody would park in the driveway, making it even less visible than rounding the corner. And, you know, across the city, living now over in Wedgwood, Houston, there's more avenue is without sidewalks, and most residents choose to park on the street, on a very narrow street, when they have alley access. You know, alleys are built as service ways for cars, for trash, and those kinds of things. And so I find that by right, this proposal is not outside of the guidelines for a dada, and that its location is appropriate on the lot despite some of, some of the concerns. So I'm, I'm struggling to find it not in keeping with the guidelines and, and the zone currently approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chairman, we, we hear the concerns of the neighbors, and they are not unusual for residential areas with very narrow alleys and encroachments such as telephone poles, trees, trash cans, and all that. However, in looking at this project, it appears that it meets all the requirements that are within the guidelines, and I don't see any setback variance, I don't see any problems from a zoning standpoint, although that's not our area of expertise. But given those factors, I don't see that there are any grounds that we would have for denying this application. So with respect to, to 1710 Primrose, I move for approval with staff conditions.
There's a motion by the vice chair. Second by, who said that? Commissioner Rosley? All right, all in favor of the motion? Okay, seeing none opposed, so that motion passes. Thank you.
So the first of two violations today is one thirteen Forest Avenue. This is a start on nineteen thirty Bundolo, oh, start on nineteen ten, sorry, Bundolo and Lockland Springs East to End. Admin permits were issued for an addition and for an outbuilding in the summer of 2022. Inspection was carried out this past March when staff found that the framing was up both the addition and for the outbuilding, and finding that no other inspections had been done previously.
Give me a second. Commission, councilmember, councilmember, if we could do your discussions out on the other way so that we can continue here, thank you so much.
So during the inspection, it was found that several changes had been made to both the outbuilding and the addition without previous staff review and without informed permit revisions. So work included increasing the size of the outbuilding, which has led to de-creases in the building separation between the outbuilding and the addition. The foundation and dormer incense have also been altered to be less than two feet. The additions eaves have grown taller. A bay was constructed on the eastern elevation, and there was some window alterations also on the eastern elevation. The bay, the increase in the evite and the window alterations have been found to meet the guidelines, so I will not discuss it additionally here. So that leaves kind of three main issues. The first is the foundation inset on the eastern elevation. As approved, that inset was about two feet off the eastern elevation. The western inset was about fifteen feet, ten inches, as constructed. The inset off the western is about sixteen foot, one inch, which meets the guidelines. The inset on the eastern elevation is about one foot, two and a half inches, which is less than the two feet typically allowed under the guidelines. So staff recommends that the foundation inset, of course, be fixed and meet that minimum two feet. The second issue are the dormer incense on the rear dormer of the home. Again, as approved, they were inset by two feet from the exterior sidewalls. It was approved to be up against the rear wall, so that's not the issue, is the side. Incense, as measured, was about one foot, three inches instead of the approved two feet. And two feet is also what's prescribed under the guidelines, and is typically required for all projects. So staff recommends that the incense be pulled in to meet those two feet. And the final issue is separation between the outbuilding and the addition. The outbuilding has increased in size. It was approved about seven hundred square feet, and then was constructed about seven hundred and thirty-three. The size itself, it's fine, it meets the guidelines, but this has led to a reduced separation between the outbuilding and the addition. It was approved at twenty feet, and now measures about nineteen foot, four inches. Typically, and we do not allow this, and there are no unusual side constraints that would typically allow us to do this, but staff finds that this could be appropriate, given the small size of the outbuilding, and given that it does not impact the stored house itself. So with that, staff recommends approval of the bay addition, the revision to the window dimensions on the first floor of the eastern elevation, and the space in between buildings, finding that they meet sections six B, six A, six C, six D, seven B, and seven C of the guidelines. Staff also recommends a disapproval of the rear addition's inset of less than two feet on the eastern corner of the home, and the dormer incense of less than two feet, finding that they do not meet section six B two and six C four of the guidelines, that they should be corrected within ninety days of commission's decision. Any questions right now, or?
To clarify again, the dormer, it's not the rear setback off the rear wall, it's the side.
It's the sidewalls, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
The applicant here.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Bradison. I'm the homeowner at eleven thirteen Forest. I just wanted to briefly give some context on, on home and the project. My wife and I do love old houses, it's part of why we live in East Nashville in the historic district. Our motivation in this project is to retain the historic character of this home and honor the history of this home. We did bring it down to the studs inside to repair a century of termite damage, multiple fires, and we're going to great lengths to keep the historic character inside the home. Historic mantles, cast iron fire shields, the original pocket doors that went into the drawing room, original doors and hardware interior. And while I realize that's not part of the historic zoning rules, I do want to make the point that we do care deeply about the history of this home. Now, in terms of the sort of root issues we've got here, the root causes, each of the issues we're seeking relief on here, the fundamental problem was inexperience by the contractor, not bad intentions, not an attempt to subvert the rules or anything like that. Joe, who is standing behind me, is our general contractor. I don't believe he had copies of the annotated drawings that were approved by historic. Those were filed by our architect before we contracted with him. Did not show up in the codes portal once he filed for building codes, and I don't say that to make an excuse, it is not an excuse. He absolutely should have known that those were out there, he should have known the rules, but I do want to make the point that, you know, this was a mistake of inexperience and not, not of malice, and I have certainly expressed my frustration with him that we're in this situation. Having said all that, he did believe that he was doing the right thing. He was attempting to comply. He knew about the inset requirement. The building is inset about fourteen or fifteen inches at the corner. He knew about that. I did not realize that twenty-four inches was critical dimension in that case. He did make all the required calls to building codes, but did not know that he also needed to call historic for review of the foundation and framing and so forth. I've done multiple construction projects over the last twenty years, both commercial and residential in Nashville, and I will say Joe is the first contractor I've ever worked with that I would unequivocally want to work with again and recommend. He is fundamentally honest and forthright, and has, has always been very transparent about any issues or questions that have arisen for this project, and I just cannot believe that he would be attempting to, to break the rules intentionally. So at the end of the day, you know, he is a good person. I really don't want to punish him by making him make these changes, particularly the corner of the bedroom would be a major change in terms of cost and time on the project to move that wall in about ten inches, nine inches, something like that, and it would create some other aesthetic issues with the building in terms of symmetry of that addition. We recognize that this work is not in compliance with the rules, and historic staff, to their credit, caught the errors and stopped the project, and from my understanding, has been very helpful to Joe in terms of working out those issues and, and addressing them. The work, and I believe Joe has photos of this, too, the work is really not visible from the street at all until you get very, very far down the street looking over another house. It is my belief that it does not impact historic character of the home or adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, and that it is aligned with the intent of the rules in terms of inset on the corner, change of materials, clearly distinguishing the new construction from a historic home. My understanding is several neighbors, including those immediately adjacent on both sides, have written comments in in support of a variance on this, and that they don't feel that this work would adversely affect their property or the character of the neighborhood. I'm not aware of any comments in opposition. I do not realize there's SharePoint Portal that those would be in, but I can say that no neighbors have contacted me or Joe with any concerns or questions about this. So I have asked Joe and the architect on the project to be here to speak and address any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradison.
Hello, I'm Joe. I'm the contractor and the project manager on this job, and just want to reiterate some of what Ben said. We have not done much projects with the historic, within the historic commission, so as he said, we were, we were aware that it had to be approved by historic, and we had the building drawings that were approved, but we're unaware of the required inspections for the historical commission, and so we weren't trying to avoid or circumvent any inspections. We had all the required metro inspections. Again, we're just unaware, and the, the general permit was transferred into our name, but the historic one was not, and so the, some of the notes that show about the inspections and everything, we did not see. Not trying to push off any blame, just to explain kind of where we got to, or how we got here. Kelly pointed it out to us, and since then, she has been very helpful in kind of explaining the process with us, so we definitely appreciate that. I live in the area, I live over near the airpark in Stratford. We do a lot of work here in East Nashville, and want to continue doing a lot. We have a couple upcoming projects that are in the historic commission, so we really want to have a good working relationship with historic, we want to abide by the rules. And while we are aware that the incense are not within compliance, we do believe they fit within the general intent of the law, which is to differentiate the house and the building and from the street, in the front of the house, everything we have kept for the original is more of a dimensional error on our part, on the incense, and then it just has, gets compounded as it goes up, and so it would be a decent undertaking to kind of, to repair it. So we're asking for a little leniency. I have a couple photos from the front of the house and the side, that just, you can see on there, it's very difficult to even see the incense, and so we believe that we fit within the intent of the rules. Joe Brink.
Say that again?
Brink.
Brink?
Yes.
I have a question for you. So is this your first time for a project under an overlay?
Within the historical commission, we've done a couple of projects that have contextual overlays.
But not historic overlay?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. So you also said, and this is just for a future for your projects, you do know now to look at a permit or to zoning to say, we are under an overlay and we need to go by guidelines?
Yes, ma'am.
You're very, very clear on that.
Very clear.
You know, I think because we, we get this from contractors and developers, and it's like ask forgiveness later. We understand that what you have said to us today, but I think it's us protecting what happens for a future, and, and so that's our purview, is to be sure that developers and contractors are very aware of what is under an overlay and that they do need to have, you know, if, if you don't know that, and, and just, you know, so we just want to be clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Bauer. I'm the architect who've been working with the entire team to, and our whole effort has been to make sure that we abided by all the, all the guidelines and made sure that we, we developed an addition and renovation to the home that really enhanced not only this home and the neighborhood. I do feel like that their, the dimension is, dimensional error in construction is about nine and a half inches. At that, that corner, it is tucked, tucked back on the property, but I think that the setback that, that is there does still meet the intent of the, of the code, even though it is not the, the two feet, whereas does distinguish between the, the historic house and the, and the addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you would have a minute thirty-nine for rebuttal, if any. I will open public hearing. Anyone here to speak on that? Yes, sir.
For the record, Councilmember Brett Withers, eleven thirteen Granada Avenue, I'm concerned for District Six. The homeowner did contact me, and I want to offer my apologies to him. I know I happen, I'm an elder at Woodland Presbyterian Church just across the alley, and we had Easter services that kept me very busy, and then on Friday, I got an amendments packet with thirty amendments to a $2 billion state and deal, so I have been a little bit busy, and I apologize to the homeowner for that. But we did receive, at Woodland Presbyterian, we did receive the, the notice for the historic zoning commission, and staff kind of asked me what, what I thought about it, and I said, I don't know, go look at it and make your own decision, but I have, I haven't heard anything from there. Similarly, I did reach out to the Lockland Springs Neighborhood Association. They reviewed it. I mean, I think our impression is that there are a lot of violations on this, and so staff have given grace on some of those. It does seem like a lot, but at the same time, I haven't heard any official position either way or opposition from the Lockland Springs Neighborhood Association, so I know that, that organization takes the design guidelines very seriously and understands that we have any number of neighbors that sometimes have violations, and I, I think that the Lockland Springs Neighborhood and myself are both willing to entertain whatever the, the commission prefers here, but I do want to thank the homeowner for trying to reach out to me, I've been unreachable lately, but, but thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay. Any other public comments? Other than that, we will close public hearing. Commissioners? Discussion?
I have a question. I have a question either for the homeowner or the contractor. Just clarify a point for me, and, and I'm, I'm seeing here that there was a, which I know the staff has recommended approval of the bay addition, and you mentioned something about the contractor did not have a copy of the current drawings.
So the bay addition was from a early design revision, so that was removed when we filed the historic permit and the building permits, and then as we began construction, I asked him to bring that element back into the design.
Okay. So you brought that back in and did not go back in front of the historical commission?
That is correct.
That's true. Okay. I'm, I'm trying to understand the process of the drawings. So is it true that the contractor did not have a current set of the drawings, or he did, and you asked him to revert?
No, he, he had a current set of the builder's drawings, the, the drawings that were approved by, by codes.
Okay.
And then the bay was on a earlier revision of the drawings, that was not part of the
Of the code.
Building permit or historic permit.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Just, and to be clear, was inspected by codes, by, by the building inspector. There's no issues from that perspective.
Madam Chair, the way I read the report is, for somewhere along the way, the what was built and what was approved has discrepancy, such as bay addition, and such as distance from main home to outbuilding, and such as size of the outbuilding. It increased thirty-three square foot. So what indicate to me is I appreciate the intent, however, the intent was not reflected on the actual construction. Seems like, you know, quite few violations, so the fact of the matter is that what constructed is not what permitted, so that's the core of the violation. And staff has forgiven quite a few violations, such as distance. It should be twenty feet, but staff is not recommending do the foundation work and, you know, obtain the twenty foot, twenty foot separation. So the measure forgiven, and such as eastern corner. So having said that, during the inspection, there are so many other violations, and there were those violations, we asked them to collect it, such as two feet inset, and two feet inset from the historical house, and two feet inset for the dormer. So those are the guideline, just because feel like met the intent does not mean still short is short. It, it's not two feet, so it's one foot, two inches and a half, so it's a big difference. So in the past, we asked those homeowners who did not meet those violations, we asked collect it, so it will be only fair to ask this applicant to collect those shortage as well. So I, I think for that reason, I support staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I drove by today to, to look at the property and get, get my own eyes on it, and yeah, it's, it is a lot of violations, and staff, Kelly, I have to say, you, you bent over backwards to make accommodations, and I think that hopefully the homeowner and applicant appreciate that. In terms of the nine and a half inch difference on the setback on the east wall, it's completely invisible from any public right of way. I could be persuaded to, since it's less than ten inches of difference and not visible, and will cause, who knows what kind of other cascade of problems to correct, I'd like to hear. I'd like to hear other thoughts of also in this one specific case for less than ten inches, offering some grace for that. However, on the side dormer, that is much more visible from the alley and from some properties in the rear. That one, I think we, I do support holding to the line on that one. That's what I've got.
I appreciate the other commissioners' comments and I'm going to maybe try to add a little finer point to some of the specifics here. I think one of the ways for me to look at is if this application were brought to us today and it weren't violations, you know, a less than 10% variance between the outbuilding, nineteen-four versus twenty, I think we've done that in the past. And it's perception of that is, you know, in that 10% less. I know getting into percentages is not something we really want to, necessarily a way we want to keep score, but we are keeping score. We're talking about two feet and ten inches and all these other things. Along those lines, what the staff, the recommendations the staff have given, I find would meet the guidelines in their view and in also in my review and understanding of the guidelines. I think the staff's analysis is right on. When you get to the two feet on the eastern rear corner and dormer insets, I, if we were reviewing this right out of the gate, two feet's a pretty hard line that we would have and for good reason on those. And I think we would, we have not tended to give much sway unless there were compelling reasons to do so in the past. And even then, I think we hold pretty fast to that. And that, you know, as a variance that is considerably more, it's nearly half, it's not half, but it's nearly half of what the guidelines are. Perception from the street, you know, cloudy, there are clouds of that issue or clouds that analysis. But I'm inclined to, I'm convinced by the staff's argument. It's very difficult, while I believe the homeowner and the applicant in that the intent is not there and maybe in some other cases, I don't necessarily believe that, but that's really, that's not for us to, we can't parse that out, I think, from where we sit here. It's, that's not what our charge is and it's impossible for us to do. And so I think in sticking to the guidelines, I've given the finer points that I would lean on in this case.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, another thing that first is this public hearing as well, that other contractors can do that. It gives us such pain to do this kind of decision-making when, and again, you know, we understand when there's not any ill intent to do these kind of mistakes, but it really gives us such, it's like, how does this happen and how does this continue to happen? And how do we stop that from happening for other projects? So, and again, and I just want to hear some more from other commissioners. But, you know, our purview is the guidelines and I just want to make sure that we're not just randomly making these decisions. And I guess the staff also is very clear on how we do these things. And we're always very caution about how to set precedence. And when the Neighborhood Association, you know, follows the guidelines, and this is another example of where if this commissioner, if this commission body said, we approve this, they would come back to haunt us. And so it's very difficult for us to do these kind of decisions. But I really appreciate how I hear commissioners debate on these things and so that we can have clear understanding with the people that are listening here in public and also that it's recorded as well. Any other commissioner comments, please?
Yes, I'm very sensitive to the applicant's presentation. I appreciate that you're sensitive to historic preservation. And I can understand that oftentimes mistakes happen with contractors. But when I'm conflicted like this, I think about our charge to be consistent in how we deal with these issues. And in the past, we've drawn a pretty hard line in terms of errors. We're sympathetic, but we abide by, you know, the guidelines. So with saying that, I agree with what staff has presented to us today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, I do feel for everybody involved with this and the difficulty, the difficult situation for everybody involved. Now that said, I do think that Kelly and the staff recommendation has given a good deal of grace with this project with multiple violations. And so with respect to 11113 Forest Avenue, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
The vice chair has made a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Commissioner Cashin, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Applicants, thank you very much.
So the second violation today is 1417 Holly Street. This is a nineteen thirties Craftsman. She's reminded me now.
Thank you, Kelly.
It's a nineteen thirties Craftsman bundle low that contributes to the Lockland Springs Eastern Conservation Zoning Overlay. An application for an addition was heard by the commission in September of 2021 and was approved with several conditions to include that staff approved the windows. The permit was issued in November of 21. An admin permit was also issued for an outbuilding in September of that year. There were notes on both permits stating that staff needed to review the windows prior to purchase and installation. It was also included on the list of reviews on page one or two of the permit. An inspection of this property was done in April of 2022 and found that the ridge raise was not per plan. One of the dormer insets was not per plan and the windows were constructed vinyl or made of vinyl and had not been reviewed. The ridge raise and the dormer have been addressed, so that's not an issue currently. Main issue are the windows. Staff notified the applicant, the windows could not be approved and we approved another substitute window. We notified them via email and also put in city words. So staff conducted another site inspection in March of this year. Staff was in the area and found that was close to completion. We stopped, hopefully final it out. It was found that the windows had not been replaced in the addition. It was also found that the same vinyl windows were installed in the outbuilding without review. So keep in mind, in this district, we do not review placement windows in the historic house as long as it's the same opening size. So the windows in question are just in the addition and in the outbuilding. So again, the windows in both the addition and the outbuilding are vinyl. In the past, vinyl has been rarely considered appropriate material because of the high gloss of the material, the inability to be standard and painted like wood windows and due to details such as prominent weep holes in fusion welded corners. These particular windows have the fusion welded corners, the weep holes. They also have this kind of element that's bumped out between the frame and the terrain as well. Again, staff had previously approved replacement windows for this project, but they were non-installed. So with that, staff recommends disapproval of the windows in the addition in the outbuilding. Find that they do not meet section four of the guidelines for materials and that they should be removed and replaced with windows that meet the desired guidelines within ninety days of the commission's decision. Any questions?
Yes, Kelly, let's make it clear. So the permit approved some windows and the applicant knew about those windows. Is this correct?
It was listed as a condition of approval.
Say that again.
It was listed as a condition of approval.
Listing condition.
Yeah.
But they didn't replace it with those windows that were approved?
Yeah, so I approved, I found this violation in April of 2022, approved replacement windows in May, so earlier following month, and they were never replaced.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I believe the applicant is here as well.
Yep.
Hey, good afternoon. I am Kat McRoy. I'm the owner of 1417 Holly Street. And I will agree with Kelly on her violation. When I purchased this house back in 2021, my intentions were to add to it, renovate it, bring it up to par for the neighborhood. I live in the current neighborhood as well. When we started building, we had a height violation. Kelly caught it for us and we met with her. And upon meeting with her, we also went over the windows, which we received an email on May 10th. My architect did Cheyenne Smith saying that the windows had been approved. So under that email, we thought we were okay, so we kept moving forward. And then met back with Kelly. She thought there was a height violation on the dada. So we met with her again and she, we got that worked out, but she mentioned the windows again. We had no clue. Again, we had an email from Cheyenne Smith saying we were okay with the windows. We kept pressing on. Our intentions, again, like everyone else, weren't to break any rules, but we didn't know we were breaking a rule. We thought we were okay with the approval. So I'm happy to show you this email if you guys want to see it. That's all I've got.
Thank you. All right, we may have questions later. Okay, open public hearing? Close public hearing?
From my understanding of the situation, it seems pretty cut and dry that this is another unfortunate case of a misunderstanding on the applicant's part, that they were given permission to install windows that were not in effect approved. And, you know, I think there's another case where the staff recommendation is what we need to uphold at this time.
And also design guidelines. And also design guidelines. Recommendation by staff under the design guidelines.
This is a comment, not really off topic, but on topic. And I have to say that I think the person that you worked with is an architectural designer. I don't think they are a licensed architect. I stand corrected if you can prove me wrong, but there's a difference. And so you can't really call someone an architect unless they are duly licensed by this date.
What I think is, you're exactly right about that. It does not require an architect to do a single-family home. So designer is fully, you know, qualified
Right.
by the law to.
Right, but she did refer to this person as an architect. So I'm always, I'm always careful.
Sure. You know, I hate this miscommunication and sometimes between project teams, there is miscommunication. It does seem to me that the staff made every effort to make as clear a communication as possible and that that fell apart somewhere before it got to the installed windows. But with respect to 1417 Holly Street, I move for disapproval of this with staff conditions.
Vice chair has made a motion. Second by Commissioner Price, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Applicant, thank you.
Next up is 210 South 10th Street. This is kind of a complicated project, so try and make it as quick and clear as possible. So this is an empty lot. There was formerly a church on the lot that's been demolished. It's at the corner of South 10th Street and Fatherland Street. Here is the proposed site plan. The lot is zoned M U N A and the proposed development is as of right. So this is not, even though it's kind of larger, complicated, multifaceted project, it is not an S P. It is being done as of right. So the project is not being reviewed by the planning commission. The project includes three residential units facing Fatherland Street, three residential units along the alley, three residential units at the corner building and ten residential units largely facing a courtyard off of South 10th Street. Just to note here that there's a site labeled future development that is owned by the same applicants, but it's actually a separate lot. It's zoned separately and zoned R eight like the rest of the neighborhood. It will be, it's a non-contributing structure. You'll probably eventually see it, but it's not part of this presentation. Vehicular access to the site will be via a rear alley in between Fatherland and Russell Streets and a side alley off of Fatherland Street. Each of the units will have attached parking at the first level, which staff finds to be appropriate for a development of this type. So I'm going to start with the three units that are facing Fatherland Street. Each of these units have, I'm sorry. So here are the front facades. It's also the alley facade for the rear unit. So you can kind of see in the upper corner, the arrows point to which facade you're seeing. These row houses are two stories with a recessed third story, all with a flat roof. The proposed height is thirty-four feet, one inch from grade. As the structures that are closest to the historic context, these are the structures that are closest to the historic context along Fatherland Street. And as such, staff recommends that these structures transition in height, scale and roof forms to the historic context along Fatherland Street. Here are the side facades. You can see kind of at the back, they are a full three-story in height. So here are just some context photos so you can see a little bit more what the historic context is. The top one is kind of where the parking lots, kind of where these townhouses will go. The middle house shows the houses immediately to the right. Those are, I'm sorry, immediately to the left. The two houses, the first two houses you see are non-contributing. And then there's a historic one-story house on the other side of that, across the street and further down the street. There's kind of a mixture of non-contributing and historic houses. The bottom photo, you can see there is a two-story house that was approved, I think, over ten, maybe fifteen years ago. It is not historic, it's in fill development. There is one two-story historic house on this 900 block of Fatherland Street. You can see here that it's, you know, just a two-story with a hipped roof form. So this is just, again, showing the historic context and the proposed houses that are going to go just to the right of the, right of this, or left of it, sorry, to the east of it, we'll say. And again, here's the overall site plan. With the historic context along Fatherland Street being predominantly one and one-half stories and with the gabled hip roof forms, staff finds that the most appropriate scale and form for the townhouses would be true two-story structures with no occupiable third floor and with a hipped or gabled form. This would help best transition the scale and form of the overall development to the scale of the historic neighborhood. Staff finds that while the height of the structure is similar to the height of the one-story, of the one-two-story house in the block, its overall roof form and scale are not. And now just want to talk a little bit about this form as it faces the alley. So again, these three townhouses will be both at the, well, you can see in the site plan at the top. But along the alley, staff finds that this design is too large for the alley houses. While staff finds that buildings along the alley could exceed what would typically be allowed for a typical, you know, outbuilding behind a one-story or behind a single-family house. The proposed height and scale of the rear building is out of context for the historic neighborhood and could overwhelm the alley where historically outbuildings were much lower in scale. These alley houses are about nine feet taller than the maximum that would be allowed for a pitched roof outbuilding. While staff finds that these buildings could potentially exceed the twenty-foot height limit that's typically allowed for outbuildings, given the nature of the development and the shape of the lot, staff finds the proposed form is just too large for along this alley. Staff recommends that the alley structure be limited to two stories in scale with no half-level or third story. The footprint of this rear structure is approximately 3,300 square feet. Again, that's much larger than what would typically be allowed for an outbuilding, you know, because the outbuilding would allow a thousand square feet. Staff finds that the footprint could be okay so long as the overall height and scale were brought down. So moving on now to the three townhouses, row houses, building units that are at the corner of Fatherland and South 10th Street. So here are their facades. This is the facade on Fatherland Street. The units are two stories with a recessed third story. The recessed third story is recessed ten feet. Staff finds that their overall height is approximately, the overall height is approximately thirty-four feet, one inch from grade. Staff finds in this location, since it's further away from the historic context, this height and scale are appropriate because there's really little historic context along South 10th Street. Two of the three units are oriented to Fatherland Street, but the unit closest to South 10th Street has an entrance on South 10th. Note here on that facade of that last row house that the windows on the ground floor are shorter than the windows on the upper level. And then here is the South 10th Street facade. Staff finds that an entrance facing Townstead Street could meet the design guidelines, but as designed, the facade but as designed, the facade articulation on South 10th Street does not meet the design guidelines. This entrance does not have the prominence or articulation needed to read as a primary entrance. In addition, the fenestration, fenestration pattern and the scale do not meet the design guidelines. The windows on the ground floor are shorter, shorter than those on the upper level, which does not meet the design guidelines of the historic context. So, historically, windows on the primary level, ground floor level, were taller than, or the same size as the floors above. So, the design guidelines say that windows on the ground floor, lower levels, should be taller or at least the same height than the ones on the upper floors versus being shorter. So, this is just an image of the corner there and then the two facades at that corner. And just, again, here's some historic context photos showing the other three corner contexts. The top photo, I'm not sure what's being used as now. It was formerly a school. It is historic, but the other structures on the other corners are not historic. And, okay, so, and then here are the courtyard. We're going to talk about the courtyard houses. Here is the first courtyard facade, so these are the ones facing the interior courts and then kind of the mirror image on the other side. And these are the South 10th Street facades. Staff has concern about the height and scale of these structures and the design of the South 10th Street facades. Regarding the facade design, these are the only facades of these units that face a public street, but the facade and design articulation look more like a secondary or rear elevations, which staff finds does not meet the historic context. The simple entries and irregular window patterns contribute to the facade design being inappropriate for a primary facade. In addition, the windows on the primary entry floor are shorter than those on the upper floor. So, these buildings are three stories in scale. There's significant slope to this lot. It kind of goes up and it's almost like a platform here, the furthest down on 10th Street. And so, we asked the applicant to submit a streetscape to see how the height of these structures compared to the height of the houses that were built, I think around 2015, 2016, just to the north of the site. Those units to the, to the north are about, are like two stories above the raised basement. The applicant has described their buildings as two stories above the raised basement. However, staff notes that typically with raised basements, the lower level is about one-half story and the entry is typically on the main level of the house above the raised basement. Staff finds that the height and scale of the proposed residential units should not be larger than what was constructed to the north. In addition, looking at what was constructed in 2015, just to the north of the site, it is two stories above a raised basement with the entry above the basement level. The two projects differ in roof forms. The existing development has a pitched roof and the proposed development has a flat roof. To be compatible in scale, staff recommends that the top of the flat roof of the proposed houses match the eve of the existing development or the, match the eve of the existing development or that the proposed development have a pitched roof with ease and ridge heights to be similar to the existing development. So, basically, we're saying in order to kind of really be compatible, since that's a pitched roof versus a flat roof, it's, you would take the flat roof as, and compare that to the eve of the structure to the north. So, here are just some other context photos. On the top are townhouses. I can't remember when these were built, around 2015 or so, maybe earlier. And then, non-contributing structures directly across the street. And here are some renderings of the development. This is the kind of corner of Fatherland and South 10th. And then, more of detailed of the corner. And then the view along the South 10th Street.
So, staff is recommending disapproval of the project. I won't read the full recommendation, but we recommend disapproval because of the issues of height and scale and orientation. Thank you, Melissa. Applicant?
Okay, I think it's all. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Scott Morton with Smith G Studio, 602 Taylor Street in Germantown. First of all, I just wanted to sincerely thank the historic staff, the East Nashville community, groups we worked with, Edgefield and East End, as well as Councilman Brett Withers. Thank you for being here today. For really all their collective input and support over, of this application over the last year that we've been working with these stakeholders. We've been working, like I said, for a year, very diligently with everyone as a community to come up with a plan that provides for an engaging public realm, high-quality architecture, and the most contextually appropriate design fitting for this unique site in the Edgefield community. As a long-term East Nashville resident myself, it is a great pleasure working on projects in the neighborhood, especially on, on sites you're very familiar with. And it's been very fulfilling to work with many of my community members and friends on a project in the heart of, of my neighborhood. We knew early on that this site was very unique within the district and that a tailored approach driven by community involvement and engagement was critical for the most appropriate solution for the design. We started our conversations first with the Edgefield Neighborhood Group to really engage with them prior to approaching Metro Historic Staff to, to have the most informed information going into those conversations. And I think that was very helpful for us starting that process that way. The site is located at the intersection of 10th and Fatherland, which is a very prominent intersection within the Five Points District. It is located within a T4 neighborhood center, which makes this a little bit unique compared to the adjacent properties in the heart of the community because it's in a, a very more permissive district that calls for mixed-use development, higher density to support the Five Points Mixed-Use District. So, you know, the site was previously a church site that had surface parking surrounding a, a one-and-a-half-story church. And it is surrounded by mixed-use developments that range in height from, you know, two to three stories on the adjacent intersections in the, the commercial district there. Our fundamental challenge was how do we design a building that is both contextually compatible with these mixed-use buildings that are our neighboring context, but also create the right historic transition to the single-family heart of the Edgefield community? So, we are a transitional property. And how do we respect both of those contexts? And that, that was, that was our challenge. So, starting back in May of last year, we've had five different community meetings to talk about this project. We've met with the Edgefield community multiple times. We've met with East End. We've met with the HOA next door for the adjacent property that's, that's developed. We've had several one-on-one conversations with neighbors and it's been a very robust engagement effort and it's been very valuable for our process and the design. Overall, the project has been very well-received by many of the residents that participated in our sessions. Some of the feedback included along the way, concerns about traffic, you know, the desire for more pedestrian improvements, bike improvements, consideration of height and how the building forms read. And, and we have accommodated a lot of those changes within the packet that is here before you today. Probably most significantly was the addition of a new alley, so dedicating right-of-way to connect the existing rear alley system to Fatherland Street. We had a conflict because our current zoning prohibits us vehicular access from the street. It requires all of our access to be from the rear alley. However, it was a strong community desire to have that connection to help alleviate the volume of traffic that would just be in the alleyway from our development. So, we did, worked closely with Metro Historic and also Metro Coats and the zoning administrator, Joey Hargis, to create a compromise that we could provide that connection that the community wanted. So, that is now incorporated. A 20-foot right-of-way, new dedicated alley will provide much-needed relief for the traffic movements throughout this area. Our final submission, you know, reflects a plan that has been revised multiple times based on the direct community input. The helpful and thoughtful community feedback, I think, produced a plan that reflects the community's desires that is most fitting for this unique location and fully takes into consideration the, the context of its surrounding development. The project also is significantly dedicating right-of-way on all of its frontages, both on South 10th for new multimodal improvements and pedestrian improvements with new sidewalks, new street trees and planting strips, new sidewalks and planting strips on Fatherland with dedications, as well as dedications along the entire alley frontage to widen the alley to accommodate future growth and, and this project. Coordination with Metro Historic staff has been very extensive with this development. We've gone through many iterations with staff, working toward a plan that is mutually supported by both the community and the staff. Unfortunately, there's, there's not enough time to review all of those changes here today. While it's, it's a lot of things that we would like to highlight for the perspective of your time, we are going to just focus on a couple of the fundamental issues that remain. You know, working closely with staff, we feel that we were able to come to agreement on the majority of all aspects of the project. We've made significant revisions based on their direct input on many aspects of their, the design. It was very detailed input that we have accommodated 95% of everything that we, we can with this, this, this current submission. What we feel, what remains unresolved, we feel like we're very close, but we do feel that there are two issues that are fundamental to not having full staff approval for this. And we think the one, the first one being the, the height of the buildings on Fatherland Street. And I am going to run out of rebuttal time, but that's okay. The height of the buildings on Fatherland Street have been a major discussion point throughout this process. We have tried to bring forward a product that we feel transitions and we've looked at different ideas to accommodate that. None of which have been supported by staff, but many have been supported by the community. When we first presented, we, we looked at doing two-and-a-half-story detached single-family as a transition, but that wasn't, you know, that was deemed too tall. Then we, we got into, we changed the, the roof pitches and did two-and-a-half stories. We had two stories plus a sloped roof form. And the challenge with that is because Fatherland was supposed to be our transition, by trying to create that more, what we think is appropriate residential feature or element with a sloped roof form, it actually created a taller building than what we were proposing on South 10th, which is the primary frontage with the flat buildings. So, while we felt that, yes, a sloped roof form's appropriate at that scale to the ridge line, it was actually taller. And so, it, it became quite, wasn't supported by the community and at subsequent meetings, many in the community recommended that they would be much more open to taking off the sloped roof form and doing a two-and, two-story with a third-floor flat roof step-back. And the idea that, that they pitched to us was that they felt that was more appropriate scale-wise on that following transition. Essentially, from a pedestrian perspective, with that third-floor step-back, you do have more of a two-story volume or pedestrian experience. You're going to feel the massing step down in that height with that third-floor step-back. And the overall height of all three floors is much smaller than the original proposal. So, we felt that was really a good compromise and that's what we've included in the submission. The second thing, I'm running out of time, but is the, the fenestration on 10th Avenue. We feel like we've, we've worked really hard to make many, many revisions. We've removed a lot of the, the previous comments about cased windows and having no front doors. We've accommodated 100% of that in our revision to create a nice facade along, a primary facade along South 10th. So, in closing, we greatly appreciate all the effort that's been put into this project over the last year. It's been, it's been my pleasure to work on it and I greatly appreciate your consideration in your, your commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, open public hearing? Please give your name and address.
Hi, Commissioners. Dwayne Cuthbertson with Britchland Building Partners at 21 Music Square West. We are a locally-owned and locally-focused development and construction company here in Nashville. We purchased this vacant corner site over a year ago because of the opportunities this location presents us. It's, it's, as Scott described, it's at the nexus of one of Nashville's most architecturally-rich and diverse historic neighborhoods, Edgefield, and one of the city's most culturally-vibrant neighborhoods.
Excuse me just one moment.
I'm sorry.
Robin, so he is the applicant. Okay, so, is he allowed to do public comment? No. No. Yeah, if you're part of the applicant, that should have been included with the comments by the architect. Maybe you should have gotten together on that. Sorry, I have to shut you down. This is public comment from others. Anyone else, please?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Pete Reeves. I live at 913 Fatherland Street, about eight houses down. I am representing the Historic Edgefield Neighborhood Association today. And as such, I would request that we get five minutes. We will have to disagree with the developers on the level of community input. Well, we have in fact had two meetings. We had one meeting probably around about August of last year, September of last year. The neighborhood expressed a great deal of issues through density and height and access and parking and traffic. We requested updates on a number of occasions. The last email that I was able to find was October of last year. And then the next that we heard about this development was in February when we heard that it was going to this, to this meeting. We had had no meetings with them before that. We had a meeting with them on March the 7th, at which they presented this, this application. And I will say there were things that the neighborhood liked about the application, things that the neighborhood did not like. The biggest issue that did come up was the height of the transition units moving down onto Fatherland and the height of the units at the back alley. Developer at the time said, would the neighborhood be amenable to taking the design that was on the corner and simply putting it down? What we said to them is, you can put that out as a proposal. We can take it to the neighborhood and ask, but really don't know because, you know, we had not had time to, to put that, that out there. On further discussions with, you know, with the neighborhood online and talking to people, that idea was soundly rejected. I know that there is one person who has written in, in support of this from Edgefield, but in our discussions with residents and in online discussions, there is not a single person who is in support of the height exception that is being requested for, for the unit on the alley and the height exception that is being requested for the unit on 210 South. At the time, we did advise them and we said, you know, your safest bet is to make those two floors and then, and then let them merge in. One of the issues is not just the height. One of the issues is that when you look at three two-story houses that are next to each other, and actually, there's very few of those in Edgefield, you quite often see two, but not three. But even when you get two or three together, they do not sit side by side. There's a gap between houses. And so, they do not appear as monolithic as this design appears. And, and the design frankly appears extremely, extremely monolithic. You will also see that the units to the north of this are actually recessed into the ground. I'm sure there's a technical term for that. And so, they're really not three floors. They, they, they are, they are lower than that. The applicant did write to us saying that they'd redone this submission and explaining what the general proposal was. And we did advise them that, that, that the community did not support that and that the community was in opposition to any exception to the two floors. And we advised them of that probably two to three weeks ago. And so, I'm not sure where this four or five meetings with the community comes from and certainly did not, did not occur with them. Having said that, I will say that there was a lot of acceptance on the behalf of the community of using the additional bonus farm to build these units. The idea of not, these units not being able to use for short-term rentals certainly did, did appeal to people. There are a number of other concerns that I really think really don't fall within the, within the ambit of, of, of this commission. General concerns about having 19 units, 38 cars feeding out from the alley into Fatherland and into an existing alley, which is extremely tight. Concerns about guest parking, concerns about density. But I think that the biggest concerns that we heard were around the height exemptions that were being requested and around the monolithic facade, as it appears, even in fact on. that were being requested and around the monolithic facade, as it appears, even in fact on, on South 10th. We fully support the recommendations of staff. They match exactly what we have heard from the Edgefield community. And so we would like to ask that this commission go with the staff recommendation and disallow this proposal as it stands right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greaves, and we appreciate you coming for, on behalf of the association as well.
Hi, I'm Alice Forster. I am actually president of Historic Edgefield and Peter's, our developments are and has been really working hard on this, so I thought it was better for him to speak. I live at 803 Fatherland and lived in the neighborhood, coming on 40 years. And I really appreciate the staff report on this and your support. The height, the monolithic massing just is really not appropriate. There are many parts, many things that the developer has done, and I think with advice from planning and other commissions, the alley access, there's some things that have been improved. But I just urge you and hope you will disallow the, the height and the facades on, on 10th, everything you suggested, really, really appreciate it. And we, I'd want to concur with Peter. I wish we'd had more community meetings, maybe other neighborhoods have, but this does sit in our overlay in Edgefield. So we have reached out over and over again. I've been one of the people emailing and we've had two meetings. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Anyone else? Oh, yes, council member.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just want to give a little bit of history of this site. The Five Points Redevelopment District originally did not quite include this parcel, but a lot of 11, some stuff on 10. When that was going to expire at the end of 2020, I worked with Metro Planning and we sort of wanted to look at entire block faces if we could. And so this is one of the parcels that was included for a rezone to try to match up the base zoning, number one, to bring more consistency because every single parcel was a little bit different, but to bring more consistency across block places if you could, and also with trying to match up with kind of what design guidelines generally called for. And so for this parcel, it sits within the Nashville Next T4 Neighborhood Center, which calls for mixed uses. So the original, what was originally on the site according to Sanborn Maps were that, you know, Fatherland Street originally had a streetcar on it. So it was, Fatherland Street was originally a major, major thoroughfare. So there was that factor. And the buildings that had sat on the site were, included a commercial building originally as well as multi-story apartment buildings. That was the historic context of the street pre-fire, right? And so based on that, as well as a lot of the other uses that are around, we kind of had two options from a zoning standpoint to rezone this, and one of those would have been RM20A. And the other was MU, MU, mixed use, MUNA. So the MUNA does allow some degree of commercial, however, it limits the intensity of the uses as well as the size of those uses. So we could have gone either way, but we went with the MUNA. I did a subsequent text change amendment. We had begun to hear in many of our neighborhoods, especially Germantown, that we'd begun to hear that the floor area ratio that was allowed by MUNA in particular does not even support townhomes, right? But you cannot even build it within that floor area ratio. And so I worked with the planning department and the codes department and we worked out a floor area rate, a residential floor area ratio bonus. So MUNA has a floor area ratio of 0.6, and so that gave you a floor area ratio bonus of one. So you could go up to a floor area ratio of 1.6, but the moment that you access any of that floor area ratio, you are precluded from doing short-term rentals. And this was meant as a way of alleviating some of the housing need that we have in our city. It only applies to center policy areas, which this has. You have to have a center policy area in order to have mixed-use zoning, which this does. So this particular proposal, a lot of, there had been a prior proposal that was an SP that was a solid wall of sort of a townhome structure that had a very prominent corner at 10th and Fatherland. And the neighborhood had a lot of concerns about that at that time, in particular because it was potentially going to be some or all commercial. So this proposal comes in, it has no commercial at all, which generally I think Edgefield neighbors supported, having no commercial. In terms of the density that's proposed, it's less density than could have been done under that RM20A option. And so I think that from a land use perspective, this is highly appropriate. Another concern that we hear a lot from Edgefield is on-street parking. And so this proposal does include a pull-in the garages for each of the units, right? So we're trying to address that community concern with a pull-in the garages. Well, if you have a pull-in the garage under a two-story structure, you end up with a building that unless it is a day-dune, is commercially unviable. And so that is one of the issues that we're dealing with at Fatherland. Another factor we heard from some folks is the alley. Originally, the alley went straight across this parcel. And so more or less where this new alley lands is where the original alley was before the whole area was demolished to build a church in the 60s and replanted. So we went around and around and worked with Robin and the zoning administrator and we worked to finally get agreement to do an alley connection here where an existing curb cut exists, but to alleviate that community concern about parking in the alley. So this, this parcel is unique for a number of reasons, but specifically for the Nashville Next reason that this is a T4 center policy area for most of the rest of Edgefield is a neighborhood maintenance policy area. So that calls for, in our, in our community plan, calls for more density and intensity than you would have further to the west in the Edgefield neighborhood, a neighborhood maintenance policy area. This is 100% appropriate from a land use perspective. It's also appropriate because it is a major intersection. It's because, as staff have noted, there is not really any historic context here in that area. A lot of the buildings that have been designed have any number of different designs. There is not one predominant design there. As you go down the block face, this next building is presently a non-contributing structure that will be reconstructed as a one and a half story. The building next to that is a non-contributing two-story building. So one has to go several, a couple of hundred feet down this block before you actually encounter a contributing structure at all. So for a lot of those reasons, I feel like this is a really, this responds to the community concerns to the greatest extent that we can. We have had about a year of time. I would actually disagree with Mr. Greaves. I was at the community meeting that was held about a year ago. It was very, very positive. Edgefield does not shy about sharing their opinions. It was a very positive meeting with that initial discussion, where there's some things to be worked out, sure. A lot of the concern that you really hear from Edgefield folks is about cars, it's about parking, it's about traffic. So if we're going to address parking, this addresses that by having a pull-in the garages. In terms of traffic, this is fully in line with what could be built by right under the base zoning. I mean, it just is, it's appropriate. Fatherland traditionally was a much more major thoroughfare because there was a streetcar line that went down it. It is included in the Nashville Bike Ways program. There is a traffic calming application on file for Fatherland. Hasn't been selected yet, but the neighborhood has filed it. And so from a traffic calming perspective, we do have stop signs at every single intersection on Fatherland and will likely get some more stuff there. So I think that the community concerns about traffic are, you know, may be understandable, but are not within the purview of this body. I find that this site is, is unique because of its, there is no historic context around it, because it's located within a T4 center policy, whereas the rest of the neighborhood is a neighborhood maintenance policy generally, because it is adjacent to some townhomes. We have heard from neighbors there that are in support of that. Again, the original community meeting that we had with Edgefield a while back was very positive overall, and we have had lots of engagement since that time, whether it was with the neighborhood as a whole, whether it was with individual neighbors, the neighboring HOA. This is a shared boundary with East End, so I've asked the applicants to reach out to East End because they do share that street and feedback from East End has been very positive as well. I'll also kind of want to, I think the line version of the drawings of these buildings kind of makes them, you know, look really overpowering, but I don't know if staff could go to the colorized image.
Just the other side.
Yeah, but no, I think that's great. I mean, I think, you know, so the original plan from several years ago was a solid wall of townhomes with a very prominent corner that really defined the intersection, which I personally thought was fabulous. The neighborhood thought that that overpowered it. So what this did instead is that it breaks it up into several chunks, right? So it's not one consistent wall, it breaks up into several sections. I find that that is appropriate. We can, we can tussle about whether you have a sloped roof on the, the units to the west on Fatherland or not. It is true that if you have a gabled form with dormers, that does tend to loom over the street more than the step-back would here. From the 10th Street side, I don't know if there's another image, from the 10th Street side, I know there's some discussion about this does not address 10th Street. I really, really beg to differ. I think that this addresses this unique site on 10th Street in a dramatic fashion that is beautiful. It has lots of glazing. It prominently features a courtyard. It includes lots of trees. They're removing overhead power lines and expanding the sidewalks. So I mean, I'm just looking at, when I look at the totality of this project, when I look at its unique location in the community plan. I mean, I will be honest with you, and Commissioner Johnston knows that we have this discussion a lot on the planning commission, but there, I mean, there's a valid land use question about whether overlays such as this are appropriate in neighborhood center policies at all, especially if there is not a historic building that is being preserved. So that is not the case here. So it is, I mean, the overlay is present here, but I would argue that given the unique location of this in a T4 center policy area along South 10th Street in a manner that addresses, I think dresses the street up beautifully, it makes it much more pedestrian-oriented, adds trees, greenery. And most of our overlays, those aren't things that you look at, but in this commission, you do look at appurtenances and things like that. I think all those things outweigh the, the height of a couple of buildings a little bit west on Fatherland that are themselves going to be bordered by one and a half story home and a two-story non-contributing apartment building. So I'm strongly in favor of this. I think that, sure, are there tweaks we could do, but, but again, like, I, I think that that addresses 10th Street in a beautiful way, with lots of glazing, with lots of open space, fantastic materials. And, and it really creates a unique project that is broken up into sections, so as not to be overpowering, but at a very unique location. And so I, I urge your support of this proposal today. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And that's also great to get that feed, feedback in the early times of how this area was developed in terms of, you know, how it should go in the future. So thank you for that. Anyone else? Before I close public hearing? Okay, thank you for all the comments. I will close public hearing.
So it's an intriguing project and I certainly respect and appreciate and, and in a lot of ways, really see Councilman Withers' argument about this. He did say in that argument though, that traffic concerns are not part of the purview of this, of this commission. He's exactly right about that. But, you know, the purview of this commission is adherence to the guidelines. And I think there may be ways for this project to move ahead, but I don't see how that can happen under these guidelines. I think the staff report was very thorough and very, very right on with that. This may be the most appropriate development from an urban planning standpoint, but urban planning is not in our purview either. And I think that if the applicant and the council member went back to the Neighborhood Association and were able to come up with a plan, there may be other avenues for them to achieve this. I just don't see how, given the description of the guidelines and the, you know, the guidelines are adopted by the neighbors. It's a strong majority of the neighbors required to adopt the guidelines. And I know that the applicant mentioned that, you know, the challenge on this was doing a transitional structure, going between the commercial area and the residential. And, and he said, single-family residential. And so this may be that transitional area, but I don't see it in these designs. So my, my support tends to go with staff recommendation, which I think is our purview, which is to adhere to the guidelines.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I do agree with Vice Chair. You know, I sit on the planning commission, so I do appreciate Councilmember Withers' comment because we discuss about policy, land use and density and so forth. But the beauty of our body is we can discuss with that content about design guideline, with those density, with those land use, with those appropriate usage, those things can fit into our design guideline. That's our power view of our body. So hearing from applicant and public, you know, they have been working really good and I do understand the original proposal to what it is proposed front of us right now had improved. But I do agree with Vice Chair, this is not a final product. And I think considering this specific corner, especially Fatherland side, and it has more historical context in the existing neighborhood, so I think we can approve this project furthermore. So our body is not, you know, here to discuss about design or provide the design. So I think staff recommendation is right on. I agree with that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I agree with my, my fellow commissioners. I just kept hearing the word purview, purview, purview during those presentations. I'm so glad I'm not on the planning commission. Their job is very difficult and I appreciate what they do. Our purview here is only to deal with the design guidelines and based off of the staff recommendations, I don't see any path forward other than to agree with staff.
I also want to just agree with the other commissioners, this is not a final project, a final decision, and it can continue to work applicant with the staff in terms of tweaking some things if you want to keep this project going. So I do appreciate that as well.
I have some challenge, I guess, to other commissioners' comments and maybe the staff's analysis as, as a blanket comment. I think their site plan wise, I feel like the project is spot on in terms of what's appropriate for an infill like this, the cost of the land, what's surrounding. The site plan to me works really well and the courtyard building, the context to me has little to do with what turns the corner at Fatherland. It has everything in the world to do with what's next door. And there, there are others who will disagree with me on this. I am not of the opinion that putting a sloped roof on something necessarily makes it fit or better. It's maybe, it's an easy solution, but it doesn't necessarily, but I bend more towards contemporary architecture and that's an opinion not defensible necessarily in the guidelines. Happy to engage, you know, in further discussions about that. But one, one specific question I have is I think in the details of this project or talking further details of this project to both help the community suss out what the real, what is a good solution and an appropriate solution within the guidelines for all of these buildings and that they're not necessarily, I'm not arguing that the plane is the same that they all reach and that they reach it in the same way. What I am arguing is that I think that the site plan is very appropriate for this site and I hear Councilman Withers and agree with Councilman Withers' commentary about what this is and how it fits in, not just in the historic district, but fits within East Nashville. And I will, I'll ask a point and question to, it's related to the site plan. One of the things I'm, I'm not sure about or really don't have a firm opinion on is building B1 that's at the corner of South 10th and Fatherland. As you talk about transitions and how that, how the project might appropriately turn the corner, I feel like that building is more of the South 10th scale from my analysis than, than it is about the Fatherland scale. And the reason why I say that is it's broken up from another building that can have a similar character, but not necessarily the same character or same height as the B2 buildings. And I do wholeheartedly agree with the staff's analysis that that is the time to transition down and perhaps the setback, while I respect and intend to agree with, a gable that comes up to the front. I'm not sure how different that is in perceived. up to the front, I'm not sure how different that is in perceived height for a gable that comes up to the front wall of the B2 building in the alley and in at Faveland Street, how different that is than, than a step-back solution. Then you have an alley and a, while it's not considered here, a very narrow house that is going to further transition into the neighborhood that while not part of the application is just generally part of the analysis. So I feel like drilling down in the details of if, if the project is further refined, hopefully when the project is further refined, I think providing some further discussion here about building B1 and building B2, what's appropriate for those from, would be helpful. Or I don't want to keep us all here all afternoon, but that, those to me are where I think the finer points of the proposal hinge, but others, others certainly I think could disagree about what the courtyard building and the height of it and its relative height when you get back to the alley. To me, it's broken by, it's set back considerably from the other buildings that is a different solution where it's right up to the sidewalk, has a much greater height appearance as experienced from the sidewalk in the street. This is set back further, and there's a break to allow car access from the alley into the back of those units with the garage down and the two stories above. So all of the rhythm and spacing to me, again, I've already said on the site, site plan comments, I think it's spot on. I'm, I'm less concerned about South 10th, South 10th Street. Could there be some tweaks here and there with windows? I think the applicant certainly would, and the architect could figure those items out. But as we turn the corner to B1 and B2, that's where, that's where I think the project sort of is made, or I could feel much more comfortable and more accepting of, of it in its totality. I don't think it's far away myself, but I'd be interested in other commissioners' comments in that level of detail.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll just add a few more thoughts. I appreciate everything that's been shared here today. I'm certainly not a land use expert, I own just enough to be dangerous, but, you know, we do, I appreciate the Cyril's comment about keeping this to what, to what our charge is on this commission. I was reappointed to the commission last night by the council, thankfully, and during the committee before the reappointing, I was asked what the most challenging thing is about being on this commission. And I immediately thought of this case because Nashville needs housing, and we need density, especially in places where it's allowed through the base zoning and by right zoning. But at the same time, there's the tension in certain situations we get in these situations where it's just not quite there yet in terms of our, our guidelines, the historic zoning commission guidelines for historic preservation overlay, which this is the highest level of protection compared to a conservation overlay. So I do appreciate the effort that the owners and developers have put into this and architects and designers. And I think, I feel like it's almost there, but I also think that Melissa's report was very detailed and straightforward, and I just encourage, I hope that the parties can come together and figure out a workable solution to provide housing that Nashville needs, but also that fits into historic edge field. I think we're almost there, but not quite there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think one additional comment is that, you know, this site is an important site and for a lot of the reasons that you mentioned. And I think it has the advantage of a good design professional that's accomplished. We have one of the most exemplary councilmen involved with this. We have a very strong neighborhood association, and I think that those groups working together can find a solution for this. I just don't see that the solution today is within our purview as a commission.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion. Oh, yes, please.
And I just wanted to say, I didn't mean to be, if I was, I apologize, dismissive at all by just saying I don't believe there's much we can do within our purview. I really appreciate, I appreciate this project, I appreciate the density, I appreciate, there were at least two meetings, and there was some back and forth between the developer and, and the local neighborhood. And so, you know, I appreciate that as well. But again, and I've been parts of these discussions in neighborhood associations when churches sell, and this is a very difficult, it's always a very difficult process, and to appreciate the work that's been done by all the parties. I just, and I think you're close, I just don't think we can, with where we are to sit today, we can approve this. And so therefore, I make a motion that we support the staff recommendation and disapproval of this project.
There is a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cashin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Again, applicant, and we do continue to encourage you to, to keep on. You're close. You're close.
All right. This is a request to construct a rear addition with an attached garage at 2611 Oakland Avenue. The project includes a setback determination to reduce, reduce the street setback on Rosewood Avenue from 20 feet, which is required when there is an attached garage with the garage doors facing the street to 10 feet, seven inches. The 1931 Sandborne map shows an attached basement level garage on this building, which is a unique condition of houses of this era in this neighborhood. Prior to the historic overlay, there were a few changes to the house. There were building permits issued to construct a side addition in 1997. With that addition, the existing attached garage, the, the front wall was pushed closer to Rosewood Avenue, and then later in 2003, a rear addition was permitted. There is an existing curb cut on Rosewood Avenue that's approximately 28 feet wide that according to aerial imagery was likely expanded to the current width with that 2003 addition, which was constructed prior to the overlay. So while the driveway was widened prior to the overlay, staff reached out to Endot just given its width, which is unusual. Endot did not have any record of permitting that change to their curb cut and let us know that the Metro Code would limit the driveway width to 22 feet wide, whereas the maximum driveway width for, in, per the guidelines is a single lane, which is approximately 12 feet. So at approximately 28 feet wide, the driveway does exceed the maximum width under both the design guidelines and Metro Code, so keep that in mind, and we'll come back to that info. So the project includes demolishing the existing screen porch and adds a modest footprint that doesn't extend taller or wider than the existing house. The applicant proposes to add an additional basement level garage, attached garage that would be accessed from Rosewood Avenue and that existing driveway. Staff finds that such an addition could be appropriate and meet the design guidelines as well as the street setback from Rosewood Avenue if the garage doors were oriented to the rear of the building and the vehicular access was taken from the alley rather than from Rosewood Avenue. If the new garage were proposed to replace the existing garage, that could be appropriate as well, but instead, this project doubles with the garage doors, an unusual circumstance for this neighborhood since when you would see these attached garages historically, they were generally one bay, and this would add a second bay. So staff finds that the proposed setback determination to be inappropriate for a couple of reasons. While the historic house had an attached garage as early as 1931, that 1997 addition pushed those garage doors closer to Rosewood. While the new addition is inset from that, that later addition, those doors, the new doors would still be forward of the primary sidewall of the historic house, which is where that, that historic garage lined up with. So the addition, so given this, the addition would build on and further expand conditions created by a nonhistoric, a nonhistoric addition that would have not met the design guidelines. In this case, the condition is that the location, the location of the attached garage in relation to the original sidewall as well as in relation to Rosewood Avenue. So while staff understands that the side addition and driveway width are existing and do predate the overlay, there is the concern that introducing that second attached garage with access from Rosewood would further solidify these nonconforming conditions as permanent features. Since there is an existing rear alley, staff finds that if a second basement level garage were to be added, vehicular access should be taken from the alley. And if those garage doors were rotated to the rear, that actually would make the project meet the, the, the street setback from Rosewood since at that point, the base zoning setback would be 10 feet since the garage doors would not face the side street. So that would eliminate the need for a setback determination. So moving on, here is the interior addition. You can see the, the new screen porch, and there's also an uncovered deck, which is not reviewed in conservation overlays, and the rear elevation. So with these conditions, and I won't read them out, staff finds that the project can meet the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay, as well as the street setback from Rosewood if the, the garage doors and vehicular access were relocated to, to come off the alley. So if you have any questions, let me. And the applicant is here, okay?
Thank you, Melissa. Sure. Applicant?
Hi, thank you. Roy Dano, 2611 Oakland Avenue. I've been a resident for 22 years of the neighborhood. This is my second home, which, which I've been there for 15 years. The, we've did an extensive renovation about 15 years ago. We did that and before we moved in. Very sensitive to the, you know, historical precedent for the place. It was a craftsman bungalow, and we, you know, did everything to, we could to sort of preserve that, that, that aesthetic. Our intention or our goal here is we're just making some, some practical updates to our home. We are going to do some internal updates to the kitchen and, and as, as the application says, make some improvements to the deck and the screened-in porch. We have an existing driveway, as, as staff pointed out, that was, that was there before we bought the place, and, and it's, it's 28 feet, I think, currently, or 24, I'm not sure. And so there is an existing cutout there, and all we really want to do is because we're going to be improving this porch above, is more appropriately and better utilize the space underneath it. It really seems to make perfect sense. I mean, we've, we've worked with Wells Design, of which Eric Mallow is here to, to speak for a second on, on some of, you know, how we came to this design and the setback considerations and everything. But with an existing cutback and, and a porch that's already going to be built, just sort of having a garage that, or an accessway that already exists and utilizing that space underneath seems to be way more appropriate than taking down a fence and cutting trees and coming from the alleyway, of which it would be very sort of inconvenient because there's a telephone pole there and, and just driving by the house and then come back and, attack it from the, you know, or entry, enter the property from the alleyway. And then having two garage, garages that face different ways, it really, it just, I don't know, we've, we've tried to put a lot of thought into this plan to see what's the most appropriate and least impactful way to accomplish what we're trying to do. One of, you know, one of the main way, you know, things, of course, is, and we considered this early on, is maybe building another garage, another structure that does have alley access, right? But that's, we really wanted to be sensitive to green space in the area. We planted a lot of trees on the property, and we want to plant more. And, and, and so this really seems to be a great solution to achieve what we're trying. And additionally, I might add that while there's an existing garage door there, we would replace that along with the new proposed one to be more gated-like entry, which would be more consistent with, you know, historical precedent. So I think we've taken all the considerations we can to, you know, to, to meet what this, what we're trying to do with historical commission and, or historical guidelines for the neighborhood. And I'll let Eric speak for a second.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for hearing the arguments we have here and for your time. My name is Eric Mallow. I'm the architectural designer on the project, working with Stephen Wells of Wells Design Associates. And we've been working with Roy and Kim on this addition proposal. And as Roy mentioned, we've been working with their goals and the perimeters of the site and the existing conditions. There's an existing screen porch, which would be removed, and a new larger screen porch built with a full basement below, proposal of the garage accessed off the existing driveway. It seemed most practical to use the existing driveway instead of building a new driveway off the rear of the property from the alley. The pavement that would be needed to come from the alley to this addition is, is much more than what is already there and, which is already existing and in use. And as well, as Roy mentioned, building a second separate structure at the rear would be much more difficult and costly and need to remove so much green space from, from their current property. One of the points, mentioning the width of the driveway, if it currently is at 28 feet, it's wider than necessary, but that's what was there. The proposal was to leave it in place, but probably would need to be repaired after construction. And so we could propose to take the width of that down to the 22 feet that's recommended, the maximum allowed by zoning. So we could do that, and that certainly would reduce the pavement and try to bring it more into conformity. Happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Mallow, I do have one question for you. So on the site plan, it shows the driveway that's there now. Are those lines that indicate where the driveway are, are those the existing lines, or did you expand?
I think there's, there's some error in some of those lines or discrepancy. The, the, and maybe a photo would help clarify, but I think the two perimeter lines, which are the width, are existing. The additional line that we added is the, excuse me, between the garage doors, it's removing some pavement, and it's adjusting the grading of that. One of the concerns that we're dealing with is the height below the structure. The current garage has a very limited height within the garage. So the new is one foot taller than that in order for a contemporary construction to be built and have enough headroom in the garage. I hope that clarifies.
Also, I'll submit some photos to, to you. Just walking around the neighborhood, seeing some double bay type garages around the neighborhood. Disregard the cute dog in my photo, I was walking with the dog. But anyway, there's precedent for this type of thing in, around the neighborhood, including, including just across the street from us, which actually I didn't include a photo of that, but they, of course, have access from Rosewood into a double car, a two-bay garage. So, I mean, we look out on it every day, and we're sort of just proposing mirroring it on the same side.
I have a question. So on the recommendation summary, which one of those items are you asking us to?
Well, so recommendation, I think, is twofold, being the entry from the alley is one. one, correct?
That's number two.
That's number two, right. And the second one is just in reference to a setback?
Okay.
Right?
About number one, garage doors in the proposed addition, that's the rear elevation. I'm trying to clarify where we're going to go with this discussion.
If I understand, number one and two are similar, both recommending that the approach to the garage be from the rear, from the alley, therefore the driveway and the garage doors would be from the alley. So I think we're requesting that the doors and the approach could be from Rosewood instead of the alley.
Okay, so that's one and two.
One and two.
Okay, plus the setback.
The setback, I don't see that on those points, but that's the additional one that was also mentioned in the staff.
We'll be sure to discuss that.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. You would have almost two minutes for rebuttal for public comment, so you can ref... Okay, I'll hold up on that. All right, open public hearing. Close public hearing. Okay? So this is on staff recommendation. I just want to be sure we're going to be really clear on this, that it's not approved unless... It's on page four. About the heaths, eve height of the addition is approximately two foot nine inches taller than the historic house, while the eaves of the addition are slightly taller than those of the historic house. Staff finds that the scale can be appropriate if the addition also meets the design guidelines for setbacks and parking areas. I want to be sure that that's not a given approval unless these other conditions are met.
So the addition that's being proposed has a flat roof, which as a result is slightly taller than the eaves on the historic house. The way staff wrote the staff recommendation was to frame it that overall, the addition in the project could be appropriate if that garage door access issue were addressed.
I just want to make sure that it's not a given, and they're going to say it's approved because of this. Just let's clarify that.
So really, the design guideline issue we have is the placement of the garage door. That's what's behind it. And my understanding is that because the existing garage was added before the overlay, it's, we would not be permitted today if it were before us today. And so the staff recommendation is we shouldn't approve another one because that gets us even further out of compliance. And I think that's a solid analysis, and I support the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I understand the staff's solution may not be practical for the homeowners, and that's not what, you know, they won't totally understand and sympathetic. However, I have really having a hard time further allowing to violate Metro Code by announced, you know, allowing additional garage door facing the existing street instead of alley. So since it's not ideal for the homeowner, but, you know, there's access, alley access, so having the garage door facing alley will be appropriate based on our design guideline. So for that sense, I think staff analysis is a practical solution.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So I'll take a little bit of a contrary opinion on this. As you look at the house since '31, it's had that garage door on the side of it. We can assume that the 28-foot or whatever width driveway has been there most, if not all, at times. And the, I understand the staff recommendation of moving to the alley. The real heartache I have with that, though, is it's about 62 feet from the back of that garage to the alley. That's a long driveway, taking up a lot of green space. And the, I think that their solution that they're showing of using doors that are more appropriately styled for this age house facing the street is better. I don't think we have the purview of saying, well, you have to get rid of your existing garage door. So I think that they have every right to keep what's existing there. And so then there would be another set with two driveways, you know, 70 feet of driveway or so to go into two cars. So I tend to be more sympathetic to the solution that they are proposing, simply because of the length of that, you know, and what that 60-foot-long driveway does to the backyard. So, you know, whatever they do will have to meet TDOT standards and recommendations. So from an engineering standpoint, they're the ones that really, we can give a setback variance, but we can't design the curb cut or the width of that for them, so.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
I have one quick question, and I just want to verify this. So it's my understanding, this is a question for the applicant, I guess, this is my understanding that you are not increasing the width of that driveway at all.
In fact, we're offering to shrink it to meet codes, right? I think it's currently, was it 26?
The document says 28. I think that's correct.
It is currently 28, and you're offering to reduce it to 22?
Correct. Right. And as far as garage doors, if I may, you're right, the existing one is what it is, but I'm offering to additionally sort of improve that one along with the new one that I'm proposing here, so that they are opening and, you know, more consistent, so.
To the, our legal counsel, could you remind me what's the appropriate setback from the Rosewood side when there's facing the garage? You know, because Rosewood side will be the garage, you know, ingress, egress. So what are the appropriate setback as far as cause is concerned?
I can take that one. So the street setback for a local street, which is Rosewood, is 20 feet, which the zoning code allows that to be reduced by up to half in some circumstances, but when the garage doors face that street, that's, it's not allowed to be reduced. So in that case, the street setback is 20 feet, they're proposing 10 feet seven inches.
And also, it's a corner lot, correct? So those setbacks are pretty important. Setback determinations are important.
But if I'm looking at it correctly, the house itself is 1310, the way it's constructed?
Okay.
Thank you. That's 1310 to the house as it's constructed, that's the historic house. This is the addition that's already there, and that's the proposed.
Right. So from the front corner, it looks like the setback, the street setback, is 13 feet 10 inches. We went back to the sandmore maps, it showed that the original attached garage lined up with that sidewall. So when it was built, that's where the attached garage was as well. That later addition brought it forward so that the existing attached garage is now eight feet seven inches from that property line, and they're proposing to inset it two feet. So then the new attached garage would be the 10 feet seven.
Got it. Okay.
So Melissa, is it your opinion, then, that Metro Codes would not allow this, or TDOT would not allow what they're proposing here?
I feel like I can't really speak for them. I think it's existing, and I don't know that it would cross NDOT's desk. I mean, I got to stick with it. I reached out to them just for information because I saw in the aerials that there was some sort of change associated with a construction project back in 2003, so I was just interested.
So I can't tell from this drawing, but it looks like, I mean, that's to the property line, that eight foot seven to the property line from the existing garage, 10 foot seven from the proposed. And then it looks like we have another eight foot or so before you get to the actual curb. So, and there's not to mention there, but just eyeballing it, but...
I mean, that's possible. I haven't measured it since we measured from the property line.
My read of this was maybe not too different. Commissioner Stewart, it seems illogical, the proposal to turn it if the garage indeed is attached. That doesn't mean, I mean, we've done logical things before, maybe in some people's eyes we do it all the time, but, so, but I, I'm, I'm, I was of the same opinion, just sort of sniff test or the eyeball test as an applicant was presenting this and just looking at it. And I, yeah, I have some suggestions that involve site plan design and some other things that might make it less bad, depending on the perspective of the staff or any other individual commissioner. But I won't get into all those things here. I think it, really, the question here is whether it's permissive to narrow down, you know, the applicant is committed to narrowing the curb cut there, and it's one of those things that's existing. We wouldn't encourage this otherwise, and I think under these circumstances, I'm open to it, and like I said, I won't beat it up any further. I tended to have the same view on it as Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Observations?
So is it my understanding, am I correct, that the addition or footprint would be approved, did it not have a garage door on it? Yes.
That's correct.
If the applicant can build this addition...
Without the garage.
But it just, staff is recommending it just can't be, can't be a garage the way it's oriented. Speaking out loud.
Yep. Good to do that. Good to do that, Commissioner.
It might be shot down, but I'll go ahead and throw a motion out there.
Throw it out there, Vice Chair.
Dare into it. So with respect to 2611 Oakland Avenue, I move for approval of the project, including staff conditions three through six, but not one and two.
And...
Before there's a motion, could I ask for clarification on that?
Yeah.
That's to approve the setback, correct?
That's correct.
And to maybe add a condition that the driveway should be narrowed to be no more than 22 feet wide, which they offered?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be good. I'll amend the motion to include the reduction of the driveway to 22 feet.
Okay. And Commissioner Williams has seconded the motion. Okay, just because there might be some nays and yays and nays, who would be the yea on the recommendation, I mean, on the motion? One, two, three, four, five, six, okay? And is there a nay? Commissioner Johnson is a nay. All right? And that, with that, motion passes. All right. Thank you for the discussion, Commissioners. I think, Ms. Ziegler, does that give you enough to guide you for other projects? Thank you so much. All right. Everybody, thank you for, it's now 4:24, we're almost here for two and a half hours. Commissioners, do you need a break? Okay. Chamber, we're going to take a, let's do a 10-minute break, 10-minute break. Thank you. Staff, you ready again? No. Robin, you ready? Okay. Staff, you ready? Whoever's doing presentation. Okay. All right. Bring it on.
Okay, next up, we have 10, no, 1110 Russell Street. This is a contributing house in the Lockland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The applicant owns the vacant lot next door to this house, and they are in the process of combining these two 50-foot-wide lots so that they have one 100-foot-wide lot. So we have evaluated the project as if this has already happened, but we're suggesting a condition that no preservation permit be issued until they actually get the lots combined. So the project includes kind of three components. There is a side addition, I wish I had a little pointer, but there's a side addition there. There is a rear addition, and then there is a detached outbuilding. Staff finds that the side addition and the detached outbuilding both meet the design guidelines, so I'm going to kind of gloss over those two. Happy to talk about them more if you have questions, but I'm really going to focus on the wider rear addition. So here's the side addition that we find meets the guidelines. And then here is the left side, which faces that extra lot that they're adding there, so their wide side yard, and that shows the side addition. So the wider rear addition meets most, but not all, of the guidelines for wider rear additions. The guidelines state that eaves and ridge of the addition should not exceed the height of the corresponding elements of the historic structure. So here, the rear addition utilizes an essentially flat roof on both the first and second floor sections. Staff finds that the first-floor flat roof addition is appropriate because that roof aligns with the historic eaves and creates an appropriate wall height. But the flat roof second-story portion creates a wall height which exceeds the historic house by about seven feet. For this reason, staff finds that the flat roof form is not appropriate on the second level. Some second-story space could likely be realized here, but this should be through the use of a one-and-a-half-story addition with a pitched roof and dormers, rather than a two-story structure that uses flat roofs. The guidelines also say there shouldn't be both a wider rear addition and a side addition added to the same house, and this project does propose both. Staff finds that that could be appropriate here due to the low profile of that side addition and the double-width lot. One new dormer is proposed on the historic roof slope. You can see it there. It matches that historic dorm beside it. Staff found that to be appropriate. Here is the outbuilding. Outbuildings are required to sit 20 feet from primary structures, and this one's only about 11 feet away, but it's offset, and the commission has approved similar distances in the past when structures are offset. So the heights, square footage, dormers, and setbacks all meet the guidelines. So in conclusion, staff does recommend support of our approval of the project with the following conditions, the one about the lot being combined prior to permits being issued, and then a roof slope should be similar to that of the historic house, then we just have the typical conditions about materials and utilities. The applicant is here. Do you have questions for me first? Yes.
The, there was a rendering, and it could be just a function of, hey, we're trying to show the forms here. The house appears to be a painted brick house, and then this is definitely not a red painted house.
It is actually a painted brick house already, and in a conservation overlay, we do not review the painting of masonry.
You've answered the question.
Yes. Any other questions for me? Okay.
We just don't know if we like that.
No comments. It's the applicant.
Oh, don't take that into record.
He's going first. I've got your slides in here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi. My name's Nick. I, my wife and I are here Ogden. We...
Address?
We, 1110 Russell Street.
Thank you.
In addition to purchasing 1110, we actually live next door at 1108, which is a non-contributing three-story structure. I think that's important to talk about the context of what happens specifically on Russell Street as you move sideways closer to our house. But most importantly, we've lived in East Nashville for over a decade. This will be our second historic renovation. We absolutely love this house. It is spectacular. When you walk in, one of the things you can't tell from the street view is that it has 13 and a half-foot ceilings, all the molding is intact, it is magnificent. One of our charges has been to highlight the historic nature of that house, and how do you do that, right? And I... And I've seen so many additions, we have Nick Dryden and his team who's been working on this, and we've seen so many additions that have that blend of it's not really historic-looking, but it's modern, and how do you capture the scale of this? And so one of the things that we've been working on is how do you make that addition go away? From, you know, with regard to the two-story aspect of it, specifically if you look directly next door on the right, on this orientation, on the right-hand side, straight across the street, you know, catty corner across the street, next door and diagonal, they, every single one of those houses is two-story, specifically the one to the right, which I think it would be 1114 Russell. That house has an addition off the back that is two stories with a gable roof. And so it's important context just to know that, and then we'll talk about some flat roof additions in the neighborhood as well here in a second. You know, one of my most important design guidelines in this whole process is how do we keep the structure as low as possible? And we've worked with the staff to make sure like the back, the addition isn't actually ground level, it is on the same level. But what we wanted to do is lower the roof height so that you are in, when you're in the side yard, it isn't actually as tall as the original structure and tries to sort of, you know, not overemphasize it. Let me see. I think, you know, that that overall height preserving the side yard is super important and really just accenting the front building and creating a juxtaposition so that the actual historic structure is the emphasis of this project. So I'll let Nick take it from here. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good to see you this afternoon, Commissioners and staff. I want to make a comment to Commissioner Bell's stat earlier that you've you collectively reviewed 98 applications this month.
This is Nick Dryden.
I'm sorry. Nick Dryden.
We don't know who you are, I'm sorry.
But I will, to that point, it's we, when we received the staff recommendation, I was kind of blown away by Jenny's report and the detail that was really covered in that report. I think she kind of underplayed the presentation, but it was very detailed, 26 pages. This is not a a simple project to review, so we really appreciate your attention to this with the 97 other projects that that you guys have to consider. So I always appreciate that consideration. Just to add to to Nick's focus on this project, you know, I think that I want to add to the idea that with this rear addition, the idea that to de-emphasize this addition as much as possible and also let it respond to this very unique side garden condition that we have with this second lot. That was one of the very intriguing things for us in the beginning was that this is a very unusual condition where you have an 1890s historic gem of a single-family residence with an empty lot next door and then someone not wanting to, you know, maximize the yield development, yield potential on that site and let that be more of a amenity to the to the support, to support the house. So that becomes a little bit more like an estate property, much like some of the historic estates in Edge, nearby Edgefield. So, you know, by de-emphasizing the the addition, the massing, the the roof in particular, this house is very, to Nick's earlier point, this house is very deceivingly large. It is, it kind of renders itself as a one-one-story with a gigantic attic, which is really like a second floor, but the first floor having 13 and a half-foot tall ceilings. And it's, you know, a little bit up out of the ground. It it the scale of it is very deceiving. So when you really get into it and start working with it, you you start to really understand some possibilities that might come between some of the potential interpretations of of the the guidelines. One of those being that it, and and we did, we actually reviewed a lot of these options with Jenny through the process and and Robin as well, and got some great feedback on a roof that does resemble the the roof of the the current architecture of the of the existing house, but it really always felt like it overpowered the existing historic house. So it just felt like the right response was to really de-emphasize that roof and to the point where the the goal really is for this addition to somewhat become invisible. So if you look at some of the supplemental images that we provided, this is a really nice site plan that kind of shows the the figure-ground study of of the two lots combined with with the unusually large front yard that's preserved for green space and then a significant layer of of screening that's provided by both softscape and and hardscape combined. The the kind of hyphen between the addition and the the existing footprint is clearly delineated with a stair, and it's significantly offset inbound into the footprint of the the main house. So it's very clear what the addition is, and it's very clear what the historic structure is. That translates very clearly in plan and on the ground plane, but we really wanted that to translate equally in the three-dimensional plane. And so that's why we we did continue that that side addition and the rear addition at the current eve height of the of the current hip roof on the historic portion of the house. And then we stepped back the second floor, which you can imagine, the second floor within the attic of the the historic structure has a vertical wall. We basically stripped the what would be a faux roof away from that and just let that be what it is. So in some sense, it may be a stretch of the the guideline, but we do feel like it's, it it comes down to the, you know, what's a good solution and what's an appropriate solution. I think Commissioner Mosley mentioned something about that earlier. And sometimes I think there's a fine line between a good and an appropriate solution, but we do feel like this is the best design, and we do feel like it's a unique condition that responds not only to to the unique site with having this extraordinary garden in the side yard and also the front yard, but it allows us to really honor that in a sense where we're really de-emphasizing that that addition where it's not overpowering all those components and dimensions of the property. I think that's all my high points. Oh, real quick. So couple of, these are a couple of quick examples. This is a really great example, I think, of a very literal response to a historic structure, Victorian structure, different than our structure. But it is, it's also a very contemporary approach, which I think each stands on their own very well, but also supports the overall composition very effectively. And we're not talking about that particular condition, but it's a very similar strategy. From the street, I do want to point out that both the accessory structure, the side side addition and the rear addition are all virtually invisible from the street, just from the strategy of of landscaping and streetscaping and also the benefit of the side yard. And then you can see from all angles that that's virtually invisible. And then even from within the courtyard, I think you could imagine that rear addition having a large hip roof on it would be pretty overpowering for that space. And then so the the accessory structure, we decided to have a similar hip structure on that accessory structure so that it kind of bookends the the addition where where the addition in the middle really disappears. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dryden. We're going to open public hearing. We're going to close public hearing, and Commissioners to discuss.
Since we have so many difficult one today, so I'm going to start. I like this design. I think it meets the design guideline. I understand it's the, you know, the flat roof, therefore the seven-foot of wall portion will be exposed than historical house. But the proportional size, everything is subservient to historic house. It's perfectly hid behind the historic house. And I think, like applicant says, if we insist on the hip roof, it would be more mass-wise, it will enlarge it. And I think previously we approved like this kind of contemporary addition to historic structure. For that sense, it's not the, you know, first time or precedent or nothing, and especially the wider, if the lot was combined and 100 feet wide, it perfectly hid behind the historic house. So and also, you know, as far as guideline is concerned, 6B2, it says, in order to ensure additional house architect proper scale addition should be shorter and narrower than existing building. And so it's technically two-story, but height and, you know, width is perfectly meets guideline. So I am inclined to support applicant request. So my recommendation is approve without condition number two, but I'm interested here at the Commissioners' opinion.
You know, as I look at this, I think about the national guidelines that say that the addition should be distinctly different from the historic home. And in a part of the world where people tend to want to do their additions to look exactly like the historic home, this is a refreshing approach to it. And I do think that with the flat roof being 10, 12 feet below the ridgeline of the house, it really does minimize the impact of that. And and with a setback, that gives even more additional impact. So I I agree with your recommendation. I like that.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Just a couple items, I think, to point out in the design solution that that shouldn't, some details, I'm sure that the, I know that the staff has looked at, and and it was mentioned in both in the, in detail in the report, but also in in the presentation that the one one-story addition to the historic home is, actually comes out proud of the house. Were this not combining two lots, and and that's condition number one, wouldn't necessarily be appropriate. And I think might not be appropriate even for every historic house, but in this condition and and specifics of this, based on the octa, it's maybe not a complete octagon, but the the sort of abbreviated corners on this house and the roof form, the porch is, it's, you know, it's not just a lot of straight lines, it's it's very ornate. And and I think so for that reason, the house is more able to hold its own to an addition that wants to say, look more at me than than otherwise. And some of the nuance of that might not be appropriate in other situations, but I don't, I don't take issue with it here in terms of the the house just has that, even even the the owner had, you know, sort of stated as much on its own. It's, it 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 speaks loudly. And I, and I saw, I think that one-story addition with the combination of the two lots is is permissive there, and the addition does come out to meet that. So you're sort of setting, you're setting a new width to the house to contain the whole piece. I think that the foil of of having the hip roof or repeating the the hip roof on the outbuilding again is 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 an appropriate response here that brings brings the piece together, all things together. I don't, I don't find issue with the the flat roof. Excuse me, and it's minimized on the second floor as much as possible, which, you know, certainly from the description of the owner and and the applicant and and the architect is is fitting with what's trying to be accomplished there. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
So this is a wonderful project, a really beautiful property. One of those cases where I was prepared to come in supporting staff recommendation, but I I think I've been persuaded by fellow Commissioners and just the uniqueness of the project itself. But I think I I would support what's been said previously.
And I would say, the description was fascinating to me about the second floor of the flat-roofed building fitting into the hip, and there's a, there's a figure, the rearview elevation, I think it's on page nine of the report, that shows that indeed there were ghost hip roof roof there, the second floor would fit into it, so. And I also want a scullery in my next house. It's completely off-topic, but I I think I've been convinced by my fellow Commissioners as well.
Okay, somebody make a motion or more discussion? And Ms. Ziegler, is there enough information for you? Okay, we just want to make sure we've got staff dialogue on that.
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1110 Russell Street, I move for approval of this project with staff conditions with the exception of number two.
Vice Chair has made a motion, second by Commissioner Cotton. All in favor? Any opposed? Any none? This project is moving forward.
Somebody left a pencil. It's Miss Pencil. Your pencil. Okay. All right. Okay, now onto 1414 Holly. The proposal includes removing the original wood siding on the house and replacing it with a pine siding with a Dutch slap 105 profile to mimic the historic siding's profile. So basically, the applicant is wanting to replace the siding on the historic house. Staff went out and looked at it, and I'll just summarize here, but staffs thought that the the siding on the front facade was in fairly good shape. There's a few boards, maybe the lower two boards on the front that were split and needed to be replaced, but overall, the remainder of the front facade was fine. The side facade, we did see that there was kind of moisture issues, and some of the boards were soft, and there was cracking, and there was, you know, issues on the side. And since they're less visible facades and not in the front, and there were issues, staff found that replacing the siding on the side with a pine siding that matches the the reveal and the the look of what is there could meet the design guidelines. So here's some more photos of the other facade. And just to note that the design guidelines specifically state that the commission and conservation overlays just look at the the primary siding and secondary siding in the gable fields or in around dormers are not necessarily reviewed by the commission. So the intent is also to replace the materials in the gable field, but that is something that would meet the design guidelines. So in conclusion, I'll just summarize here, staff is recommending that the siding on the front facade remain and be restored, except for those few boards at the bottom that need to be replaced and hopefully replaced with the ones, boards that can maybe be salvaged from the other facades. But staff does recommend approval of the siding being replaced on the side facades. And I think. Thank you, Miss Pencil. Okay.
Hi, my name is Ben Polston. I am serving as the general contractor representing Lauren Finney, the owner of the property at 1414 Holly Street. The Historical Commission has already approved replacement of siding on the left and right elevations of the home, and we are asking the commission to just allow us to replace most of that siding on the front and rear elevations as well. We are planning to replace the windows as they were damaged in the March 2020 tornadoes. In order to do that, we're already going to have to remove some amount of siding around each of the windows. Our intent would be to pull any trim pieces or casing pieces off, replace and insulate the windows, and then put back trim in the same size, profile, and manner of the original siding, only using a modern material that is approved through the commission's submittal process. We'd also like to be able to insulate this home while we're replacing the siding. The house being an older historic home, there's no insulation in the exterior walls. We'd like to bring the energy efficiency up to speed while we improve the windows. The main reason that we're requesting this change is to just save the homeowner unnecessary cost and difficulty. is to just save the homeowner unnecessary cost and difficulty. The challenge is that the interior walls of the house are plaster and lacquer and we feel like it's easiest to remove that siding from the outside while we're already doing the left and right side and all the windows and those trim pieces around there. And just allow us to go ahead and blow our insulation into the, each of those exterior wall cavities from the top. We're already going to be replacing siding and already going to be repainting the entire exterior of the home. And this will allow us to have much less labor doing it this way rather than having to get inside the house and patch a bunch of holes and repaint every exterior wall of the house, kind of mandating the rest of those walls being painted. So again, just to reiterate and summarize, we understand that the desire to preserve the character and style of the original architecture. We feel that we can replace this siding as a historical approved material and can work through the accepted submittal and approval process to ensure compliance and provide an end product that honors the intent of the commission. Uh, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Public hearing, closed public hearing?
May, may I provide one point of clarification? Um, the applicant said that we had already approved removal of the siding, but staff has not issued any permits for siding removal.
Duly noted.
I'd be interested in my other commissioners', uh, input on this. But one of the things that, uh, in doing a fair amount of research about historic buildings, especially wood frame buildings, many of them have lasted for decades or centuries with no insulation. And many of them have been insulated and then had an untimely death due to mold and rot and other things introduced by the insulation. So, uh, when, when you look at the technical briefs and the information on this, most of the heat goes out of the roof. So a robust roof insulation, attic insulation is always recommended, but it can really be detrimental to a structure to, and, you know, trap that moisture that's going to wind up getting in there, especially in this climate and this environment. So I, I don't see that as a, a primary reason for approval of this. That's something that we could discuss, but, and it's certainly a purview of the homeowner to do what they want to. But it is generally not recommended to insulate these walls in wood frame structures like this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think that one of the beauty of owning the historic home is the loving care of the, you know, old material such as old wood with, you know, smaller grain is literally last hundred years. And it's more tolerant for the weather. And so that's the beauty of it. So I think, you know, preserving front section of the siding is a reasonable request while, you know, allowing the side and rear where damage is more pronounced. So I think our staff recommendation is right on it. And I really appreciate Vice Chair's comment about the structure of the, you know, old house.
If there are no other comments, if you want to make a motion. Other commissioners, no?
I make motion to, on regards to fourteen fourteen Holly Street, I make motion to approve with staff condition.
Motion? Second by Commissioner Price. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you.
All right, the next is twenty eight nineteen Hillside Drive. So the commission originally approved infill at twenty eight nineteen Hillside Drive in twenty fourteen. Fast forward to January twenty nineteen, the commission approved a revised plan, which is what is currently being built. The majority of the materials have already been approved and construction of the infill is nearly complete. So the request before you today is for a material review. The applicant requests to install Skyflow Venetian blinds to the, the windows on both this, on both side elevations as well as the windows on the rear elevation that are not part of recessed porches. The proposed material is an exterior aluminum blind and the applicant proposes to use the self-supporting version, which you see here, which includes exterior hardware that would be mounted to the brick above the window openings. The client, or the applicant has stated that the reason for the request is to meet his goal of the house being zero energy. And the, as proposed, the blinds would be operated automatically and closed during periods of sun exposure. So here are street views of the property. The windows on both side elevations are visible from the street and conservation overlays, materials and finistration are reviewed for all new construction. With regard to materials, in particular, the design guidelines state that a new building's public facades shall be visually compatible by not contrasting greatly with surrounding historic buildings. So staff finds that the proposed exterior blinds would not meet the design guidelines for materials as well as proportion and rhythm of openings. Staff finds that the exterior blinds are not visually compatible and would contrast greatly with surrounding historic buildings since exterior blinds are not a feature that was seen historically. As permitted, the infill's rhythm and proportion of openings meet the design guidelines. The proposed exterior blinds would negatively impact the rhythm of solids to voids by, uh, by adding a more solid component to the openings that would obscure the glass. Exterior blinds change the exterior appearance of the window openings by not just obstructing the view of the glass, but also by adding dimension to the opening that creates an inappropriate profile that would be not typical of the historic context. So while the goal of energy efficiency, staff understands that, staff would suggest using alternatives such as operable shutters, window awnings, window films, landscaping, interior blinds, curtains or thermal curtains to, you know, at least get the applicant closer to meeting his goal, even if those, they may not get them there completely. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed exterior blinds, finding them that they do not meet the sections of the Hillsborough West End design guidelines for materials and rhythm and proportion of openings. The applicant is here.
Thank you, Melissa.
Sure. So you can just move it.
Okay, then my slides.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much for being open to discussing this and I really appreciate your hard work. It's really going up in load, so to speak. And I'd like to keep this.
Confirm, confirm your name and address, please.
And I like to keep this relatively short. Okay, my name is Franz Bodenbacher. I'm a professor in biomedical engineering and physics at Vanderbilt University for more than twenty five years. I live at twenty five ten Blair Boulevard, which is a historic building. So I live in the neighborhood. I've been there for fifteen years and this project is really very dear to me. And I've been working with the historic commission on appropriate infill, appropriate materials. And I've been really in very close contact and I really appreciate the feedback. So now, um, what we've done so far is that we've taken great measures to make sure that this house is a, is meeting advanced energy requirements in a sense that it actually should be a passive house requiring no energy to be cooled and heated. So therefore in the design, we have actually included large porches and overhangs. There are porches on the north sides to confine with the design requirements for the house. And, uh, but there are like fifteen windows. Some of them are visible from the street. I actually think that there are probably like one, two, three, four, five, six windows visible from the street. All other ones are in the back and not directly visible to the street. So the windows which are currently installed, there are triple claced window. They have anti-reflecting coating already and they are actually certified for passive house standards. So they are meeting R eight insulation requirements. Typical windows you can buy in America are probably R three. So we really went to great effort. The R value of the walls is R forty. We have continuous insulation on the outside. We did extensive thermal modeling because that's part of my education. And we can actually meet passive heating and cooling requirements if designed. However, the external shades are critical. And I'd like to explain to you why that they are critical and they are not just a minor component in this design. So one of our modeling is to look at the total energy balance in the cooling season. There's a large difference between cooling and heating. But in the cooling season, what is critical is that the temperature gradient between the inside and the outside is not very large. It's probably like ten, fifteen degrees. So thermal conduction through the walls is not as dominant as actually the heat loading through the glass. And this is what you see in this structure, in this pie graph, where you actually see that the heat accumulation through the glazing is about sixty five percent of the total heat load of the house. So this is a substantial amount of heat what comes in through the glass. You can actually see that if you have a car, your car gets tremendously hot because it's the heat trapped. And once the heat is behind the glass, there is almost no escape. But let me go a little bit further and try to explain that. So here are three scenarios. One, nothing is done. The, the heat comes into the house and essentially only because of the anti-reflecting coating, about ten to twenty percent of the sun rays go back. The second, that's actually the best option, is to use internal Venetian blinds and bring them as close as you can to the window so that the sun rays get reflected outside again. But remember, you're going through triple class and you have an anti-reflecting coating on the outside. So in this case, fifty percent of the energy is actually reflected back out. With external shades, you can get eighty five to ninety percent of the energy staying outside and being reflected to the outside. The nice thing with the Venetian shades is that you can adjust the angle so that it's optimal to the sun. So that not only you shade, but you're also allowed to look outside. And that's a unique feature with essentially those Venetian shades. And that's why I'm really very dear to this project. Now let me do just the back of the envelope calculation, okay? So I propose to install shades on fifteen windows. That's a total area of thirty five square meters, the windows. Now in Nashville, per day, per meter square, there is about four point two kilowatt hours deposited on energy from the sun. So therefore, if we sum that up, it's about a hundred and fifty kilowatt per day what you have to cool. Now let's look at it. So if eighty percent comes into the house, I have to cool hundred and twenty kilowatt hours. Typical, the HVAC is actually a coefficient of efficiency is about one. So you spend about the same amount of electricity than what you actually get in cooling. So this costs you eighteen dollars if you don't do anything to the windows just to cool the house based on the impact from the windows. If the heat gain is fifty percent, like where the Venetian shades move close to the window, you still have about seventy five kilowatt hours to cool. And that's eleven dollars per day. So if you go that down to twenty percent, that's four and a half dollars or thirty kilowatt hours. So if you then sum this up and do the total saving, you get about eighteen hundred if you go from internal Venetian shades to external Venetian shades. So you see that it's a tremendous saving. And it's not a tremendous saving in terms of money for much. But I do think if you compare it to, you can drive a car for twenty two thousand miles to accommodate for that change, then, you know, I think that justifies the effort. Now let me go forward and essentially tell you that there is no other way to get this kind of efficiency than using external shades. Curtains, especially black curtains, they do not really work in for cooling. They may be okay or okay-ish for the winter. But in this case, I don't think we have another option. Now I'm a physicist and I told you the facts about the energy and the energy consumption, but I cannot, I think still this is the best option and I still think this is a nice addition to the house. Here you can actually see the view in the back. Venetian shades allow you to still have a view to your background, backyard and not be locked in like curtains are. Uh, so the main question or the main criticism is that the openings are like blind window openings. When I cover them with Venetian shades, I kind of disagree. If you look at this picture here, you can actually see Venetian shades. If they're partially open, they actually reveal a tremendous amount of glazing. And therefore I really think that they are the best solution to actually make the window not a blind window. So, and I'm also not requesting the front facade, just the sides facades. And here is what I'd like to present. Essentially, I have students from Belmont coming around and looking at the building in terms of their construction, in terms of the measures we took for reducing it down to a zero energy house. When I told Tom that, you know, um, the question is whether I get these Venetian shades approved. He really said is that making sure that the window proportions being the greater historic design priority, I would point out that the shading function of the blinds you have selected, keep to proportion of the window openings and this is the main aesthetic concern. So I really would encourage this interpretation of adding additional Venetian blinds, that they actually don't neglect the openings, they actually add to the opening. And if you actually look closer to this picture, you can actually see the historic house on the right hand side has Venetian blinds at the very top, at the very top big opening. You asked, why do they have Venetian shines, shades there? And what they actually did in this case, and this is the same thing as my house had, they actually used that for the attic ventilation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your explanation. It was quite interesting. Thank you. Close, open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Okay, any questions to the applicant or staff?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, sorry.
I, I do have one question for you. So the blinds that you're showing have a box that's on the outside and a frame that's mounted to the outside.
Yeah, so the.
Is there one that's a lower profile that doesn't have all that junk on the outside?
The, the key is that the box, it's actually quite small. It's the smallest box I could find. It's, it's about eight inches tall and the profile is that wide. So it actually is not protruding very much. The, the shades shown here were kind of the maximum shades you can buy for four meter wide windows. So support through the middle is not required. We can have a complete slat basically and not any breaking in the middle and so forth. So I think it would look sleek. You know, if the commission would insist, I could offer that there are guide wires going down the side so that you only would see the, the big box and the box at the top, essentially, and not the guide wires would not be visible. And what I also think the automation is critical for this. And I would not be surprised if in ten years' time shading will be part of the building code.
Well, thank you so much. I'm really interesting and very, I um environmentalist in a way. So I do appreciate, you know, those uh lecture and energy efficiency uh advice and so forth. But what I'm struggling is uh, you know, our design guideline. Especially, you know, the one it says uh visually compatible, not contrast, but uh not only that, it says brick molding around the window opening is required. So this being outside with eight inches, you know, a box on top. So it contrasts with uh our guideline and it will block brick molding. So I will be all for it if it's not block the molding or if that's such a design fit within the window itself and not interfering with our guideline. But as of right now, I am really kind of struggling with the design guidelines. So I tend to agree with uh staff recommendation.
Thank you. I think this is probably one of our first ones that we've projects to have an exterior piece of, I don't tell again.
A question or clarification from the staff? The um applicant wishes to um apply this on the the front of the house is north facing and and the sun is, you know, the maybe some late uh late summer sun, very, very minimal, um given the orientation. Uh but the application is to apply them to the sides. Is the south part of the the non-street facing side also part of the applicant's um proposal? I I understand that the two side facing elevations are visible from the public way. Does the staff have have an issue with the rear windows and the quantity of those windows? Is the applicant proposing to put them there or the overhangs taking care of that?
I believe that that you are proposing to cover some of the windows that are not recessed. Uh if the request were just for the rear windows, it's unlikely it would be before you. Um I believe staff could issue a certificate of no effect, which we is a tool we rarely use, but we have when it's something like this. So it's just that the side facades would be very, very visible.
And I I I get that in terms of the conflict between providing or the goal to to be a net zero on this house and meet meet the guidelines. But I I did, I was curious about the rear and and whether whether that would be of of concern to commissioners and and the staff in terms of meeting the guideline. Thank you.
Very interesting presentation. Thank you very much. Um, I think it's a, you you've got a really noble mission here with your house. Unfortunately, it's also complicated by the fact that you chose to do it in a historic neighborhood.
I did not choose.
Uh you you bought the property.
No, the was the overlay was placed after I bought the property.
Oh, okay. We we don't, we don't, this brings to mind solar panels, right? Okay, we don't review those. We do? On the facade?
They're always approved, but we do. And the only reason we do is because back in the day, they used to be much more invasive than they are now. Now they're just flush with the roof. Um it'd be great if they could always be in the back, but they have to be where they have to be to work. So they have not been an issue.
Yeah, there's one in my neighborhood that's very much in it. I mean, in terms of the the language of contrasting greatly with the surroundings, it it clearly contrasts greatly with the surroundings. But um but the idea is is to create renewable energy. I I I see a conflict that we that we would approve solar panels, but not something like this. Not saying I really I I would approve of either one. Um, I just see a discrepancy in how we approach solar versus anti-solar, I guess.
Commissioner, I just want to interject. I think what we talked about before with solar panels, and I know we're getting a little off the subject, but that because it was, uh it could be removed. It wasn't like structuring to the roof.
Right.
Correct me.
Could these not be removed?
Yeah. From a design perspective, we were looking at, you know, that that's a roof, which is different from a window. And that this covers the look of a window and that the solar panels don't. You see them certainly, but it doesn't necessarily change the look or the pitch or even the color sometimes of a roof. So again, we weren't looking at it, the two as similar because we are not looking at energy efficiency, we're looking at design.
Okay, I think I'm gonna not get confused anymore about Commissioner Mosley has brought in the question. So if they took out, if they removed the windows on the side, they selected not to put it on the side and he couldn't see it, would that be acceptable?
I think it was stated that it would, they would issue, wouldn't be before us and it would be a certificate of non-effect.
Right.
That's what I heard.
Rear, just if it was, sorry, Robin, go ahead.
If it was on the rear.
Yes, if it was only on the rear, so.
I'm sorry, I thought you said sides.
Oh, no, but I thought he was gonna put some windows on the side.
He he has windows on the side and my understanding is he'd like this on all of them. And
Right.
We would have no issue with adding it to the back.
Right.
But not the sides in the front.
That's where we're going. Just so that the applicant can hear that.
So with the interest of uh time, I try to make motion. Uh with this um twenty-eighteen hillside drive, I make motion to approve the window, only the rear side, but uh deny the window ventilation on the side where visible from the street.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Price has seconded that motion. We'll see how this goes. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, we have unanimous then. All right, so there's none opposed, so that motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, the next case is nineteen fifteen Eighteenth Avenue South. The applicant proposes a rear addition that extends taller than the contributing house at this property. The house at nineteen fifteen Eighteenth Avenue South is a circa nineteen-twenty cross gable English cottage style house. The house contributes to the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The applicant proposes a rear addition to the existing house that meets all base zoning setbacks. A future outbuilding is also indicated on the site plan that is not part of the submission. The applicant's proposed addition extends taller than the historic house, has full two-story massing across the entire addition and has a footprint that slightly more than doubles the footprint of the historic house. The design guidelines for this overlay state that addition should not be taller than the historic building unless it is the only option. Given the significant grade change on this lot, allowing for natural additional height at the rear of the house, the size of the lot and the twenty-six foot tall existing ridge height of the historic house, staff finds a taller addition not to be the only option for achieving a rear addition with upper level space. In the past, the commission has sometimes found an addition that extends taller than the historic house to be appropriate when the historic house is a modest one-to-one and one-half story house and some additional height will allow for upper level space that would otherwise be impossible to achieve. Staff finds that not to be the case here, though. Staff finds the full two-story massing inappropriate for an addition to a one-and-one-half story historic house. Staff recognizes that the historic house has taller eve heights on the rear of the house than is typically seen on a one-and-one-half story English cottage style house. While these eve heights may allow for some more flexibility on eve heights on portions of the addition, staff finds the full two-story massing across the entire addition that also extends taller than the historic house to be inappropriate. Staff finds that an addition with full two-story massing, a taller ridge height and a larger footprint does not meet the design guidelines. On the north elevation of the existing house, the applicant proposes to add a door to a portion of existing wall beyond the midpoint behind the existing side bay. Staff finds this change acceptable because the change is beyond the midpoint and would be minimally visible as it is tucked behind the existing side bay. Uh staff recommends disapproval of the proposed addition uh for the reasons on the slide. And I can take any questions and I know the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Joseph.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Such a fun afternoon and evening. I've learned a lot. So uh um I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. We're here to discuss nineteen fifteen to Eighteenth Avenue South. Uh and I'm here with the owner, Cody Goodwin. And I'll let him say hi. Hi, Cody Goodwin. I live at nineteen fifteen Eighteenth Avenue South. I moved here in two thousand and eight where I met my wife. Uh we both were students, grad students, and she was in med school at Vanderbilt. Um now she's faculty there. She wanted to join, but she got called into work. So you know how that goes. Um we moved to this house uh in June of last year. We love it. We love the neighborhood. We love our neighbors. Um and uh we started communicating with Joseph uh in the historical commission around sort of what design guidelines we could have with the house uh in the fall of last year, um where we got some clarification around the number of stories of the house. Um and uh that's when we started to work with later in the year, in the beginning of this year, with Allard Ward Architects because obviously their reputation is stellar. They've done a ton of houses in um the in our neighborhood and we were able to tour some. And they seem to be uh consistent with the historical standards of the neighborhood and also very livable. And as my wife and I hope to expand our family, um having lived in this house for a year, we find that the current designs of the addition would help to accommodate that. And I'll turn it over to the professional.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cody. So does this work? No, I I've never had the uh, never had the clicker before. That's a dangerous tool. Um so we got involved with this, uh the owners had already sort of gotten initial feedback. We're talking about three different sort of issues here. Um, this is what I would consider a a generous standard lot. It's it's eight thousand square feet. The footprint of the entire addition and house is only twenty-three hundred square feet. It is only twenty-nine percent lot coverage. Uh and it is exactly one hundred percent, Joseph. I I promise, we do check ourselves digitally every inch count. So we we are within what I would think would be our allowable footprint, which is exactly a hundred percent. This house has no big covered porches or anything either. So footprint is really mostly footprint on this one. So I feel like that we have covered. We submit things every month. The the addition being allowed to be two feet taller than the house frankly has applied to almost everything we submitted with exceptions. And I'll I'll tell you standard and verse what they are. Projects with side additions are not allowed to be taller. Three-story houses are not allowed to be taller. I mean, these are clear-cut things that we deal with every day. But two-story, especially one-and-a-half story houses, are typically allowed to be two feet taller. This is not something I would have even bothered to ask the question. The critical part of this, because it is one-and-a-half stories from the street and two stories in the back, the critical question would be what would staff want us to sort of do with alignment of eaves? That is the first question we would ask. It would dictate everything about how we would design this addition. We didn't have to ask that question because Joseph had already provided that information. And this was what was provided to Mary Ellen and Cody and given to us when we started working on the house. When asked about the size of additions and number of stories, regarding overall massing and number of stories, given the height and form of the rear of the house, staff finds that more of a one-point-five to two-story form may be appropriate here depending upon overall massing and design. I know that I said in the meeting that it would need to be a maximum of one-point-five stories, but after seeing your photos of the rear, we find that something closer to a two-story form could work here depending on overall design and size of the footprint. That's what I took to start what we did. So we assumed we were good with the uh with the two-story eve across the back and we've been very consistent with that. We made the addition two feet taller and that only happens there sort of right behind the existing sort of gambrel ridge. The rear of the house is actually about a foot less than that. So the rear of the house is only a foot taller than that gambrel ridge. There is some grade there which helped us because the ceilings in on the first floor are not particularly tall. So so that grade helped us pick up and with, as you all know, with modern framing, we, you know, it doubled the size of the foot of the framing member. So we're gonna be able to have a ten-foot ceiling in the addition. But I don't think that grade necessarily should count against us. It's just sort of a natural aspect of what we have to deal with. The height of the house, I think it depends on where you want to measure it. Every time we're measuring per day, do we measure from the foundation line? And that's that's explained to me is that gives consistency to everybody. So our measurement from from foundation line is only, excuse me, twenty-two foot six. And our addition in the rear from foundation line is twenty-four foot five. So, you know, it depends on how you want to use the math and the grade, but typically I don't think the grade should count against us in this particular case. So the question is, if if we're gonna sort of decide all of a sudden hundred percent footprint, it's not something we can expect on a nice lot like this, we need to know that. I think I need to understand how subjective some of these rules are going to be and what my involvement needs to be with staff. How many times I need to meet through the process of sort of putting something together to know if I'm doing it the right way? But, you know, we do at least a couple of these a month. So I I feel like I have a pretty good handle on what those basic guidelines say. And I would certainly go to staff if I saw anything that I thought was unusual about this lot or unusual about this particular house. And I felt like Joseph really clarified, and I think wisely so, because that eve line is a consistent original two-story eve all the way across the back. I'll stop and so I can answer questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay.
Um, I'll start. I think that this addition overwhelms the historic house and we've been pretty consistent. I I I won't, I'll say we have been consistent lately in the last few years that two, full two-story additions should not be added to one-and-a-half story houses. Uh I have to dispute Mr. Um the applicant's case otherwise. Um I I don't remember that being o- otherwise uh in in recent times. And also for, we've also consistently upheld the guideline that additions should not be taller than than the historic house unless there are conditions uh related to the lot uh slope and and up and setback that make it the only way possible to to efficiently add add to to the house. So this, to me, I'm I'm, I think Joseph's report is right on and the recommendation is right on that this um addition overwhelms the historic home.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree with Commissioner Price. I think our guideline is pretty uh consistent. Uh when we uh allow additional two feet in height, which is a very conditioned, that's the only option uh the house has, uh such as constraint of the or grade. And this house is grade is going lower. So therefore, there's no reason to raise the, you know, uh height uh two feet than taller than uh historic house. It can be same or lower to make it much more proportionally appropriate uh with a historic house. So I think uh for that reason, uh Joseph's analysis is right on. I tend to support his uh staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
There are no other comments, I'm happy to make a motion.
Go for it.
Okay. With regard to 1915 Eighteenth Avenue South, I move for, to adopt the staff recommendation of disapproval based on the guidelines stated.
There's a motion. There's a second with Commissioner Johnson. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? One opposition?
I'm sorry, I didn't see who seconded and who opposed.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Price and then Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Mosley has opposed. Two opposed. Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart and Commissioner Mosley. And, we've still got quorum on that, so the motion passes. Legal, you good? You're iron on that, okay? Very good. Okay, thank you.
The next case is 1806 Ashwood Avenue. The application is for the construction of a rear outbuilding with rear and side setback determinations. The house at 1806 Ashwood Avenue is a circa 1915 side gable bungalow-style house that contributes to the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. The applicant proposes a flat-roofed one-story outbuilding with exterior stair and an attached raised terrace component that is constructed into the, into the rear grade. There are two components to this project. A garage, highlighted in yellow on this slide, and a terrace addition without occupiable interior space, highlighted in blue on this slide. Both structures are one-story and built into the grade at the alley to help minimize their visual impact. This lot has significant grade change, allowing a design of this nature to be naturally integrated into the site. The structure will have a green roof to help further minimize its impact. The building will be visible from the alley, but due to its integration into the site and its green roof, the structure will be largely unnoticed from any other location other than the alley. Typically stairs should be enclosed, but in this case, the upper level that the stairs lead to is a flat rooftop that is flush with the higher grade of the property rather than an enclosed second level. The building is located at the rear of the lot with vehicular access from the alley. The garage half is located 10 feet from the rear property line and 5 feet from the east side property line. The exterior stair connects the driveway alley to the backyard. The west half of the structure is indicated as being slightly over the five-foot side setback and on the rear property line. Staff finds the building should fully meet the five-foot side setback and the rear five-foot Currently, the stair is indicated as being on the side property line. Per the base zoning, the exterior stair must be at least two feet from the side property line. Staff finds the stair should be located at least two feet from the side property line to meet this. Staff finds that the overall massing scale and form of the proposed outbuilding can be appropriate as it meets all of the design guidelines for the footprint, height, and scale, and the outbuilding is naturally integrated into the site, thereby minimizing its visual impact. Staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions shown on the screen, and I'm happy to take questions as well. And the applicant is here, if you have questions.
Thank you, Joseph. Probably might have questions.
All right.
Okay, applicants?
Hello, everyone. Chris Strickland, 406 Bushnell Street, architect. On behalf of the owner, Stephen Pettit and Kathleen Kelly, she just had to leave to go pick up her kids. In the interest of time, I'll try to be as brief as possible. This has been a two-year process with the owner of, they're really excited about having a backyard and contributing to a true green roof situation and creating a garden in the backyard for their kids, establishing a situation where you have more pollinators in the area, birds, bees, all of that. They're very in love with nature, in love with their site. And so the, the real question we have, in the interest of time, is the zoning recommendation, I guess my question is the determination of the misunderstanding of a structure versus a structural element. They say we have to push the structure back minimum five feet. We've pushed our, our building back 10 feet. That is the structural piece of it. Everything else on that site, which was shown in blue, are just retaining walls to keep the grade, to mitigate the grade and, and keep that a level space to, to plant and grow on. So that's what I'm trying to determine here. We met with Joey Hargis at zoning, and we asked him about the retaining wall question, walls on the site, and we were fine there. We met, per the Union Code 17.2.040, Section C, we meet that, we met that portion of the code. So we're really asking, I'm not sure what we're in violation of. So, and the portion of the stair, we will readily comply with that. We will move the stair over to, to come into full compliance with that portion of the project or portion of the comments.
Any questions to the applicant?
Well, yeah, I think it'll have some influence over, Chris, over all the building performs, how the green roof performs. Drainage coming off of the, of the garage itself, is that to the alley side or to the, to the opposite? Well, it'd be on the stairs, but I doubt it's to that side. It's just, it's a curiosity of.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to use this clicker, but we have, we've done a full grading and drainage plan to address that. It goes back to the site, it goes back onto their, to the garden.
Gotcha.
Into the lawn, yes.
All right.
And it's collected.
So you, it, there'll sort of be a pair, not even a parapet, but you'll have a gravel stop in that water. You're not going to come over and have staining and all that stuff.
Correct.
That's important to you.
Correct.
And it looks like just detailing on the structure, your railings coming down, and it's kind of, it's a side attachment so that that, you know, you don't rot out or rust out the railings and all those kinds of things. I know that's in the weeds a little bit, but appearance of those, especially from, from the alley and, and being that this is in some ways non-traditional, those kinds of things matter, as, as they appear to matter to you. You've answered my question. Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, applicant. You may have a couple, maybe you don't have any rebuttals. Open public hearing? And close public hearing? Thank you for waiting. Okay?
So Chris has a pretty specific question about site wall, fence slash walls, the guidelines speak, are not silent on those items, but they, it doesn't receive nearly as much attention as an addition or a building would per se. I mean, to my, I'm compelled that these are site walls, not necessarily structures, but I could be convinced otherwise. I don't, I'm curious how other, other folks see that. If, if it were a fence element and you wanted to wall in your backyard for privacy, how different is this? Yes, you're backfilling it with grade. There is a substantive difference, difference there, but that affects the owner kind of from the inside and not necessarily the person in the alley who's walking. And again, it's the very back of the lot. There is some influence to the neighbor, and zoning is certainly applied in that way to not negatively influence light and air to your neighbor just as a basis of zoning. But I'm curious what other people's thoughts are on, in terms of building versus retaining wall.
Before we go there, so staff, can you, do you have any comments about how you came up to this recommendation? To be, just run through, thanks, Joseph.
Yeah. So we did recognize that it's a little different with that terrace piece over to the side, but in staff's view, it has railings, it has walls on all sides. It doesn't have occupiable space underneath, but that's really the only thing separating it from being a full-fledged structure. And so we found that that needed to meet the setbacks just as the rest of the garage did. I think that explanation sort of satisfies the question for me, that this is a new structure, it's not just a wall. It would, I mean, you could easily imagine it being another section of the garage with occupiable space inside. It's, it's not, but I can understand the setback, Joseph's recommendation on, on maintaining that five-foot setback as a result.
And would there be any negative impact on the alley for services? Could be. Not that that's our purview, but.
Yeah, I was just going to say that's not really in our purview.
Just clarification purpose, so I think the garage structure with green roof will be, applicant agreed to meet the setback, correct? And then staircase will be two feet from the property line. So what we are questioning is the retaining wall portion, and the cause agree retaining wall does not have to be from the, doesn't meet the setback. So retaining wall can be on the property line, but I think the structure, if the deck structure on top of the retaining wall, maybe the wall or structure need to be, come inside of the setback? I mean, wall itself will be okay, but have to be, if it's a railing or something on top of the retaining wall, maybe, does it need to meet the setback? Maybe that's a legal question. Or those structure can be on top of the retaining wall, some railing or short wall or whatever the case might be.
So because we're finding that the, that the piece over to the side here, I'll go back to this slide. The section in blue is really what we're, the primary point of concern here, and because staff found that to be part of the outbuilding structure, just like the garage portion was, we found that that needed to meet that, that rear setback. And I think the applicant is arguing that it's just a retaining wall, and so it could be on the property line. But staff found it to be a little more than just a retaining wall considering it has walls on all sides, it's got railings on top, it's more substantial than just a single retaining wall.
If you agree that the garage is a structure, the garage half, the blue half is also a structure, because it has four walls, a roof, railing, it's just, the only difference is it's a little bit shorter.
It does not have a roof.
And then there's the interior, but you don't review the interior.
Can I say something else? Am I allowed to?
I think the commission will probably allow that.
Yes. To be clear on this.
Yes, we need to be real clear.
The, the three walls, oh, excuse me. Yes, there's our three walls. The wall toward the back of the house, that, those retaining walls do not sit in the same plane. Does that make sense? Like, they don't all come to the ground there. If you were to pour water in there, water can seep out of there on the backside. So the first wall, the closest wall to the backyard, is to mitigate that transition down into a, to create a, a flat plane at the lower portion, where it says grass. That is what that first retaining wall is. That first retaining wall is only three feet high on the backyard. That's it. So it is not a complete boxed structure. It's complex, yes, but it's not a complete boxed structure. It is, it is four walls that are sitting at different heights, so to speak, to mitigate the sloping grade and to create an area for, for planting. So, but there's no roof, it's just, it's retaining walls that backfill.
So it looks to me like from the drawing that you're, that you're meeting the setback on the side, on the side property line?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
And I guess the, one other question I have about the rear is that if you're right on that alley, I guess from a practical standpoint, I have two concerns. Number one, trash trucks and stuff and others go down, then, then does that give you enough protection for that? And number two is, to me, it looks like coming out of the garage is going to be difficult from a site standpoint to not pull out in front of cars before, you know, they're coming down. So is there, have you considered those two?
We considered that. We weighed the option. A couple of things we thought of was if, if it were so desired, we could put a mirror on that wall, on the shorter retaining wall adjacent to the, the garage. The simple fact is the owners really want to use every square foot of that as their garden. They understood that, yes, it may, you know, they understood that there's a, there's an issue, not an issue, but there could be the trash truck issue, and it could be a site issue, but that was trumped by the fact that they want that to be used as a, a pollinating garden for the neighborhood.
So I'm certainly appreciative of the owner's desire to, for the pollinating garden and all the, the things that go with that, the attributes. However, I'm not compelled that that's the right solution for this, and I think that the staff recommendation is appropriate. And so with respect to 1806 Ashwood Avenue, I move for approval with staff conditions.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cashin. All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
No, we moved when you're right. I like to end with something sort of easy and it's a little complicated anyway, so get ready, I'm going to throw a lot of numbers at you. Okay, so this is an application for new construction of a duplex infill on this lot here in Waverly, Belmont. Staff has issued a demolition permit for this non-contributing house. This site is irregular in several ways. So first of all, the lot is 52 feet wide at the street, and then it tapers back to about 40 at the rear. It's pretty sloped, from the middle of the lot to the rear, it slopes up about 10 feet. This end of, except for this particular lot, this end of the block, the lots are larger. You've got 60, 67, 68 feet wide. Then the other end of the block, they're all kind of standard 50-foot wide lots. And then the next property to the right there in the visual, that's the last property in the overlay, and then you're at Wedgewood, which I think we're all familiar with, it's a pretty busy street. So it's kind of an unusual, irregular lot, so we'll start with that. There is alley access. So first of all, even adjusting for that curve in the road, the proposed front setback sits forward of the adjacent historic house. Staff's just recommending that that front setback be increased so that the front wall of the proposed infill lines up with the front wall of the historic house next door. So it would bump it back just a little bit. Okay, here's the front elevation. Staff finds that when compared to historic houses on similarly, similarly sized lots, this structure is a bit too tall and a bit too wide for the proposed form, and it creates an overall massing that's too large for the context. So let's look at the height first. The proposed height is 31 feet 4 inches from the highest point of existing front grade. Houses on the much larger lots do have heights of 31 feet or greater, and there was a typo in your report that I noticed yesterday, so I apologize for that. The correct addresses of the taller houses on wider lots are number 823, 825, and 827, which are the ones you see here. When we look at comparably sized lots, the taller houses all have a pyramidal roof form where only the peak of the roof reaches this tall, not the full half-story massing. Houses on similarly sized lots, I'm not sure that wasn't me, similarly sized lots with similar roof forms have heights of 25 to 27 feet tall. Given the nearby heights and the site conditions, staff found that maybe a little bit of additional height would be appropriate here if the width is also corrected. Staff suggested- Staff suggested an appropriate maximum height here would be about 30 feet. However, that maximum height should take into account the foundation and grade. The front foundation is proposed to be about 18 inches, which is contextually appropriate. But staff's concerned that there's no change in grade shown on these side elevations. Contour mapping suggests that the grade rises as much as four feet across the depth of this property here, or the depth of the proposed structure. So in similar cases, what ends up happening is, you know, the lot is steeper in the back. So then the finished floor has to bump up, and then that means the foundation grows in the front, and then your whole height has gone up. So we run into that a lot in the field. So we'd like to see revised side elevations showing that change in grade before we issue a permit, just to make sure we get ahead of that issue and don't, don't run into problems later in the field. Okay, so the proposed form is a cross gable. While a 32-foot wide portion extends towards the street, that's that front gable portion, the main massing of the house is a full-height side gable that is 36 feet wide. This width is similar to that of historic houses immediately next door, again on lots that are considerably wider than the subject lot. The wider houses on 50-foot wide lots have pyramidal roof forms where the massing tapers from the eaves up, rather than extending that full 36 feet for the full height of the structure. And that has a significant impact on the overall massing. Houses with similar forms on 50-foot wide lots have a width of 32 feet. Staff finds that this 32-foot width is appropriate for a house with a side gable form on a lot of this size. So here on the streetscape, I've just shaded in the massing of this house, it was a little harder to see the full width of it, the way it was drawn, so I just wanted to emphasize that, so you can see it in comparison with the neighboring houses. So in conclusion, we are recommending approval. We just want that finished floor height to be consistent as usual, the adjustment to the setback, the width and the height to both be reduced a little bit, and then revised side elevation showing that grade, then just the utilities and materials approval as well. With those conditions, we find that it meets the guidelines. Now, the architect is here and would like to speak. Questions for me first? No, just throw a lot of numbers at you, I feel like. Yes?
So you said the widest portion of the house is 36 feet. But I think there's a chimney in each side sticking out two feet and encroaching in the side setback?
That is, that is correct. And the way it was shown, I believe they're shown as optional, so maybe, maybe they don't end up actually being, being constructed that way, but you are correct. 36 feet from sidewall to sidewall, and then another two feet on either side of chimneys. So we're looking at a maximum total visual width from the street at about 40 feet. And I, and I listen to the lot just kind of taper, so I think it might, those chimneys might encroach in the setback a little bit, which is allowed. Chimneys are allowed within the setback. But yes, that, that might make it appear a little bit wider. Other questions?
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, applicant.
Good evening.
Very last.
My name is John Root with Root Architecture, and this is a little bit of the Goldilocks project, too big or too wide. We concede everything staff wants except items three and four. Those are obviously the width and the height. And for the sake of discussion, we can just say the chimneys are off it. They were optional to our client. I think after discussion with our client, he doesn't want to put them in the project, so we're gonna take them out. So that doesn't even need to be discussed here today. So what, this is a tough site. It's a very, very tough site with a lot of hardships, and I understand staff's recommendation. I understand the guidelines in which they have to enforce, but that's why we have you guys. And we approached this project, and we looked at a couple of different things. Can I go backwards on this? Perfect. So very important to understand is there's two things going on here. Is, as Ackland meets Wedgewood, there's, there's parabolic shapes, two of them. And there's one being obviously the property widths. And there's a lot of time spent on defining property widths with our neighbors' properties. But in this situation, we, I don't think, I don't think it's valid. I think it's all moot, because what we looked at are the width of the homes and the spacing of those homes between each other. If you can see on the map there, core, about five or six houses, and they get really close together, and they get even closer than about 10 feet apart. And what we're proposing is, I think, 20 feet apart. So we looked at our width and massing according to what's already built there, not necessarily the property dimension on that parabolic shape. So it's really, really kind of tough to, it feels like a square peg in a round hole here. And both of our neighbors to the west are 36-foot in width. So that's what we went with. But knowing that we have a scale issue here, and knowing how visible this project is to the corner of Wedgewood, and all of the other things, and 10 feet of height from front to back, and I agree that we do need to look at the four foot. Our, our client said that he's gonna dig some of that out, so it's really tough to understand that grade until the house gets demolished. So absolutely, I wanna revisit this with staff. We, we have two areas in the house where we can step the house up and use some of the ceiling height to kind of camouflage some of that height. But the 36-foot width is set back off the front significantly. And I, I do agree with staff's recommendation that we need to set it back a little bit more. We were going off of a survey, and we just put it, we just put the front of the house on where the surveyor told us to go. But after, after further review, I think I agree, it's gonna need to set back another three feet. So I agree with that staff recommendation. But in this situation, the two neighbors to the west are 36-foot feet in width. And I believe that 36 feet is absolutely appropriate here, because we are bringing a mass off that front 36 to 32 feet, and then putting an additional six-foot deep porch on it. So I believe we've done an effective way, effective job of reducing that scale and massing to where that roof that you see in the distance is significantly back and going further away. It is correct to note that it is going uphill, but we are significantly further off the sidewalk than a lot of our neighbors. So those houses are stepping back and back and back and back. And so I think that's important to note here, that the scale and massing is, was very dominant and very, very centric to our conversation on how we present this project to the commission. So we feel like it's appropriate. We've done this plan a couple of times around town, and we've had very good success, very good positive reviews. In the location it's at, we're, we're kind of, we're making offense to the commercial traffic on Wedgewood there. And it really, I wouldn't even call this on Ackland Avenue address, because right in front of it is Wedgewood. It's right where the properties go. So we have a lot of hardships with the, with the grade and with the tapering, and with the parabolic shapes that we have to meet. So I'm appealing to the board to accept our width and heights. And actually, I, I'm not optimistic we can keep that height. And so a general rule in my head that we've done in the past is keeping it, keeping a one-and-a-half-story, one-to-one ratio, 36 width, 36 height. If we can keep it in that, in that scale and keeping the, the form that we've had, I feel like it's appropriate to our neighboring houses to the left, which she corrected the slide here, right there on the top, the two, those two top. And I have additionally, if anybody would like to see it, I have the property cards printed off from the tax records, if you want to see everything documented there. Thank you very much, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing and close public hearing.
I will start with the comment. I do appreciate, you know, applicant reasoning, wanting to have the existing width and height. So my comment is a width, because, you know, he mentioned either side of the house has 36 feet wide, but either side of the house has front edge of 60 feet and, and 68.6 feet, while this house has only front edge of 52 feet. So yes, I understand this lot is difficult to work with and therefore challenging, but to me, it's a little concerning, because as of right now, the blueprint shows each side is five-foot setback. So it, like, zero margin of error. And if somehow, you know, miscommunication happened, and it would be within the setback. And if, you know, oopsie, something happened, it's gonna be encroaching in the setback. So that's my concern. I will be interested here at the commissioners. So I am in, I would like to, you know, support not as currently proposed 36 feet wide, but need to come down. You know, could be 34, you know, 32 would be appropriate, but not, I'm not inclined to support what applicant is proposing.
Thank you.
I will introduce a counterpoint. I'm compelled by the applicant's argument of rhythm of openings, the spacing rhythm of openings, despite the wider lots on either side. And by that, I mean as the, given the shape of the street and as the houses are closer together, perceived scale of less space between houses and, and height, and granted, they, they move down as they go. I'm, what I'm saying is I think this house has enough room to breathe, and that it's equivalent in width to other houses that are directly adjacent to it. As, as a counterpoint to that argument, the, the distance between, despite the width, the distance between, and this sort of infilling, this one tooth here, won't look like it's ill-sized, if you will, in, in all the mouth of the teeth on the road, to use a really bad analogy. I'm, I'm less, the height, I'm still doing math over here and trying to figure out what's proposed and what we want to get to, and so on and so forth. So that, that I don't, I'd love to hear other commissioners' opinions about height, but those are, those are my, my thoughts on width and, and just appropriateness in this, of this particular design, in this particular location.
Chair. So I drive, this is my neighborhood, I drive by this every day. And it is, it is a very strange lot, because it literally, it may say Ackland, but it really does seem to say Wedgewood more than it does Ackland. But visually, I understand what you're saying, because driving by these houses every day, just the current houses there, you saw a picture of it, it's super tiny, a little bungalow, long contributing. And so visually, it does seem like this will work. Now, I can't do math at 6:12 on a Wednesday afternoon, so we may have to work on that a little bit. But the overall spirit of it, there's some, these are beautiful homes, too. One of them's purple, bright purple. But we don't regulate color. But it, I appreciate that this design will fit in with the aesthetics of that row of beautiful homes. That doesn't get us any further down the path, I don't think, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Just in, in informal conversations with neighbors and friends, you know, new infill like this, people often, they don't, they don't have the, a lot of people don't know the technical measurements and terms that we wrestle with every month, but they just don't like it when a whole lot is covered in a house, all the way up to the five-foot setback, like Commissioner Johnson just said. I think that the analysis of why this is too big is, it resonates with me, and I, I get it, because I see houses where, that we've approved even, and I just think they're too big for the lot, or they overwhelm the houses next door. And while, you know, applicants or, or it's really, you know, owners, they want to maximize their investment, that's not really always for us to, to take into consideration. And I think scale does matter, and setbacks matter, and how close this is to the houses next door, and the lot width, all, all what went into Jenny's analysis, I think, is, is legitimate, and I'm, I'm inclined to support. Reminds me of one recently we did on Porter, near Porter and Greenwood, I think, where we went back and forth with the applicant, maybe three times, on, on a duplex that was being put on, on a very small lot with limited access. And it was a very similar kind of situation in my memory, that, you know, we said, come back with something a little smaller, and eventually we, everybody got there, we got to an agreeable point, so.
Could we just go back to staff recommendations one more time? I just want to look at that. I've lost internet access here. Now, the applicant agreed that they didn't have a problem with one and two, it's just three and four. That's correct. Okay.
Quickly fill in the rest of my argument. The height-to-width ratio, I found, I finally found what I was looking for in terms of that height-to-width ratio. And as, as submitted, those, I find those to be not contrasting greatly and meeting the guidelines. Not to compel others necessarily, but to say that I stand by my previous comment.
You know, I, I too had lost internet access, and just been able to pull this up, and given the fuzzy screen that we can't even read the words on, I needed something more to be able to, to look at. So I finally was able to get it up. And in looking at the site plan, you know, there is room, breathing room between these structures, and, and it is a, a street with some pretty impressive houses on this. And I think the design that has been proposed for a duplex fits in with this neighborhood. I'm compelled by the applicant's arguments, and, and feel like, although this is deeper and longer than I would prefer, we typically don't look at that as much as we do what the front facade and what the spacing between the houses is and the overall height. So I'm compelled by that, and tend to agree with Commissioner Mosley on this one.
Do you want to try have a motion? Let's see how this shakes out.
With respect to 821 Ackland Avenue, I move approval with the staff's recommendations, except, or excluding items three and four in the recommendation.
Are there any other?
Yes, and I'll amend that, noting the comments made here by the applicant, that the chimneys will be removed from the submission and are not approved.
Okay, there is a motion, and let's, and there's a second by Vice Chair. Let's see who is in favor of the motion. Please raise your hand. One, two, three, or five? Okay. And opposed, there are two. So the motion still passes. But it's good to have these discussions, and thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for waiting to, oh, we have one more. I know. One more, one more. Yeah, one more, and then a.
Okay. So 806 Pettway is a non-contributing structure. Basically, all of the buildings on the 800 block of Pettway are non-contributing. Oops. Oh, it's not, can you advance? It's on my computer. Thank you. So we get the next, is that working? Is that working? The applicant is proposing an addition and an outbuilding. Basically, though, the addition is, if you go to the next slide, being constructed on top of the, on top of the non-contributing house. So we apply the design guidelines for infill because even though they're using the existing structure, the end result, the new roof form, the new height, is more like an infill design. The overall height will be about 25 feet. The width will not change. If you go to the next slide, here are the side elevations. Overall, staff found that the, the project met the design guidelines in the historic context. Again, there's not much historic context on this block of Petway. So there wasn't really a lot of historic buildings to compare it to, but it is around the same size as the other infills and additions, similar additions that have been done. If you go to the next slide. And here are the images of the garage. The garage is actually less, about six feet less in height than it could be. It's about 19 feet in a true one-story garage. And if you go to the next slide, again, here are just some context photos. It's a mixture of non-contributing houses. Well, they're all non-contributing, but some of them are ones that the commission approved around 2015. And then, that's it, if you can go to the next slide. And so staff is recommending of approval of the project with our standard conditions. There were neighbors here earlier, but they had to leave because of time. And I sent them the drawings. I had not seen the drawings. I sent them to them. The architect is here.
Okay. Open public hearing, close public hearing. Okay? Any questions? And it was pulled from consent because we had, we had, there was somebody who was here, but they had to leave because of the time.
Madam Chairman, with respect to 806 Petway Avenue, I move for approval with staff conditions.
Motion. Second, Commissioner Johnson. All in favor? Oh, sorry. You got a question?
I'm curious if, just add a little levity here.
Go on.
Is that the fountain of youth in the backyard? If so, before this project starts, I'd like to visit.
Okay. It might be. Oh, it's fair you can, okay. There, yes.